All right, well, good evening, everyone. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals this March 23rd. I'm required to read into the record the following script. Please bear with me. My name is Steve DeYoung, and I chair this Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. We will now convene the March 23 meeting as required by General Law Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. Say that fast. The public are able to attend this meeting either in person or via the alternative public access. Members of the public may watch the meeting live on Channel 18 or watch and/or participate in the meeting hosted in Zoom. The meeting notice provides necessary instructions on how to join us by Zoom. And please note that audio, video, and screen sharing functions will be disabled for all attendees. You may request to participate by using the raise hand function. This evening, we're going to do a roll call to assure we have a quorum. Mr. Igo?
Present.
Mr. Mantoni?
Here.
Mr. Frapery?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
And I'm here. That's a fully constituted board of five regular members. And so we'll begin with the first item on our agenda. And that is, please feel free to come right up to the table. That is the request for appeal on property located at 1272, 1276, and 1282 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass., a vote to consider a dismissal of that appeal. And before we get going too far, a unique question has been placed to us, two unique questions have been placed to us by Attorney Reed, who is representing this petition that's concerning only the vote tonight. We're not going to get into the merits of his opposition or request for action. The two questions are, can a board, such as the planning board, effectively vote and obtain a majority or a four-one vote on a five-member constituted board if one of the members lives in another town? And secondly, the entire issue of how we get here in the very first place. There was a certificate granted by the planning board, the planning board on a road petition. Those of you who don't know what road stands for, it's a revitalization overlay district. And it's a means by which you can take a project of some merit, some size, and bring it to the planning board for consideration, meeting the specific criteria provided for under our zoning bylaws. And if that then is certified as a voted by majority of the planning board, it then has to come to this board for the actual grant of a special permit. The criteria for each board is set forth in our zoning bylaws and far too lengthy to read to you tonight. So if you'd like to, if you've got a cell phone, go on your cell phone and call it up under Yarmouth Board of Appeals, and you'll see the ability of you to tie on to our zoning bylaws. Having said that, Mr. Reed is here. But before we get to you, Mr. Reed, and your presentation, I just want to say that we have these novel questions that were placed to us by your actions. And they were so novel that we asked, our town planner asked town council to weigh in on them. And town council is very definitive in his advice to this board. And I'm permitted by his communications to give you certain information about his advice and only certain information. His information and opinion is that Brad Goodwin is properly a member of the board at the time of the vote because he was duly appointed by the appointing authority, that is, the Board of Select Persons. He had not completed his term. And I'm sorry, perhaps you have something, but I couldn't find anything anywhere, nor am I inclined to look further, that says he has no right to serve on the board by taking and nullifying his continued action before his term expires. The second is, can you even appeal to this board? And I know it's an issue that I think everybody who's given it thought has struggled with. And our town council again has opined that there is no appeal from the grant of a certificate by the planning board under the road petition. So consequently, when I ask somebody to consider bringing it to a vote without a lot more conversation other than a brief presentation, Mr. Reed, I'd ask you to keep it within the merits of just those two questions because the petition itself for a special permit grant is on our agenda tonight. And that's why we wanted to deal with this issue for you first. And then you are free to engage in whatever information you want to present to us on the second matter of the petitioner, 5007, that petition number, which was the subject of the planning board. So if you could be very brief, I'm not trying to stop you from talking, but the town council has weighed in. I think as a constituted board, my opinion is we have to take the advice of town council because that's why we pay them. And we're not a court. So these legal discussions that constitute the question about Mr. Goodwin and the question about is there even an appeal from the planning board certificate grant are for higher entities. So please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, David Reed of South Yarmouth, and I represent Nancy Rayburn, who is an immediate residential of butter to this property. As you've indicated, after the planning board took its vote by a four-to-three margin in favor of this approval under the road bylaw, the property owner made the application to you. We then learned that Mr. Goodwin, who is in effect the deciding vote, in fact, did not live in the town of Yarmouth and had not for quite some time. It is my opinion, based upon my research, that one must be a resident and registered voter in the town in order to be eligible to be on the planning board. Since he had not been for many years prior to that vote, it was my opinion that he therefore was not a legitimate voter and could not cast a deciding vote. That is one of the two issues that you've mentioned. On the issue of how to address that, I agree that that's equally a novel issue. And I appreciate the fact that the town got some guidance from town council. Here's my dilemma. Under the road bylaw, the essential predicate for anyone to even apply to you is that they have that majority vote from the planning board. They cannot even apply. They don't have standing to apply to you until they have that. In my view, for the reasons I just stated, I believe that that board's decision is tainted legally. It is not sufficient to allow them to apply to you. The bylaw, under the road bylaw, provides no guidance, no specificity as to how one is to ever have a chance to review the actions of the planning board by a court or by anybody else. But if I don't seek to review it, then how are you to address the issue when it comes to you thereafter with this present special permit application? If I'm required to wait, as apparently, apparently is the opinion of town council, until you act and there is a definitive decision at that point, should you grant the special permit and should my client wish to appeal, neither of which is decided yet, I would then be in a position to have to ask a superior court to review or reverse your decision based not on any decision you've made, but based upon what the planning board did before you. And I find that to be an untenable position for anybody to approach a court to ask to do. But there is, as you know, in our law, municipal law, a concept of exhaustion of administrative remedies. You cannot go to court to seek to review a municipal matter until you've first tried to review it at the local level. Local issues have to resolve locally first because the superior court is not supposed to substitute its judgment for the judgment of the board if you've made a legitimate decision. But I'm in the catch-22 now. I can't go to court because the planning board hasn't made a definitive decision. They've just approved a process to get to you. And I can't ask you to review their process, so I can't satisfy my exhaustion of administrative remedies. And I can't go to court until you act. And when you act, I'm in a position where I'm asking the court to review somebody else's actions, not yours. So I had a real dilemma, and I thought about this a long time before filing this appeal. I thought it was my only way to preserve that issue and keep it as a live issue so that you could review it and ultimately, if necessary, a court can review it. I do appreciate your comment about getting advice from town council. And if that is the town's position and if that is the board's position, then, as you said, the substance of the matter is on for review tonight. You will hear in a while this evening the merits of the application that is the subject of both of these appeals. And frankly, I think there's more than enough meat there for you to have to decide a lot of issues on the merits of the application. It's a significant development that you're not going to be at want for things to think about and decide to get to that point. Should you, or you will make a decision, but if anybody is dissatisfied with the ultimate decision you make, then perhaps we'll need to resolve all these issues in court at a later date. But that said, I appreciate the fact that you gave me an opportunity to speak my piece and at least explain to you why we're in this, why I'm putting you in this awkward position and why I feel that I'm in an awkward position. And I will respect your decision, and we'll move forward later tonight with the second half of this case.
Thank you, and thank you for keeping your comments brief, the eloquent way that you presented your information, and also correcting me on the vote of the planning board, which was four to three. So if Mr. Goodwin was not constituted properly, the vote would be annulled because it was a tie.
Correct.
And a tie goes to the person other than the petitioner. All right. So this isn't a matter open for public discussion. It's an agenda item. It's really a discussion for the board. Our town council has weighed in on it. I think you're all aware of some of the town council's actions by perhaps seeing some of the emails that have gone back and forth. I don't know whether you have or you haven't. I just know that I was posed with a question relative to the scheduling of this tonight. And so Dolores and I worked out the scheduling and getting it on the agenda and how to write it on the notice. So, you know, that's definitive. There was no equivocation in town council's reply to the questions that were posed to him by, I think, Karen Green. In any event, it was unequivocal. We hire him for a purpose. We are not a court. And I think those two issues that you've raised are truly legal issues and not for us to decide. So that's my position. Anybody prepared to make a motion? Or do you want to have discussion before moving along? Or what do you want to do?
I do have one question for Attorney Reed if I could just ask.
Sure.
Do you believe a vote tonight would constitute an exhaustion of your administrative remedies by law and therefore allow you to go to court?
Actually, no, because I don't think you're reviewing the merits of the question. But it would probably satisfy my ability to then go to court because you've at least, I've at least tried to. And a court cannot criticize me for not having attempted administrative review.
Okay. Can I just ask him a question?
Sure, of course. Yeah?
I guess the one thing I'd just like to clarify, and I heard what the council said, but the way it says it, as far as appeals happen in our rules and regs, it basically says, you know, any other administrative official in violation, but it also refers specifically to Chapter 40A. Is there something in 40A that you specifically can reference to make it sound like this appeal makes sense?
Well, the, yes. And it's not so much in 40A, it's in your bylaw. The bylaw in 411, by specifically saying in 411.6 that no one can even apply for this.
Can I interject just for a second? I think we're going in a dangerous territory tonight if we're going to ask to identify and resolve these two legal issues. It shouldn't be a debate about them between you and this board.
Okay.
They're legal issues that really should be resolved before a court of law. That's the board, the council's position as well. It's my position. And I've studied 40A, eight and 15 at great lengths today. I've looked all over the road provisions. I don't see any right for this petition to even be before us. But I do see a paramount right for your client and you to express your discontent with the petition and as interested parties to then be able to appeal it and raise the issue of whether or not it was properly before us. That's not an issue that's forestalled. You can still bring that up in a court of law. This is the last administrative remedy you had to even address the issue, and we denied your ability to address it. That's a pretty, shut door on administrative remedies right there.
I agree.
Okay. So anybody interested in making a motion?
I'll make a motion to...
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the request to dismiss the petition. Is that the proper motion? Is that...
We deny the request to...
Dismiss?
No, this is a, it would be a motion to dismiss the petition that's presented by Mr. Reed in his filing. If you remember, there's a...
Is there a petition?
Yeah, there is.
Yes. Petition number 5011 is on schedule now for hearing on April 13th.
So it would be a motion to deny dismissal of petition...
Note, it would be a motion to dis, if you're inclined to want to raise the issue of ending this tonight, and it would be a motion to dismiss the petition brought by Mr. Reed.
Okay, we can do it that way. I didn't, I wasn't aware that you brought a petition. I know they brought a petition. I thought you were...
Their appeal is number 5007, which is before you tonight on your regular agenda.
Okay.
My matter is number 5011, which is on for hearing on April 13th at this moment.
Okay, all right. I was unaware that there was actually a petition filed by you. So it would be to dismiss this petition?
Yes.
A second.
Board, can you have any discussion on that motion so made and seconded before moving along to a vote? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call. Mr. Mantoni?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
And Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that carries five to zero on a roll call vote. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for giving me the chance to at least address you on the issue.
We'll look forward to speaking, hearing from you on the agenda item to come. So now, what have I done? Oh, here it is. Good. A petition 4999, John R. Hamel, trustee of the Hamel Realty Trust of 2014. This concerns property at 108 Breezy Point Road, South Yarmouth. Gosh, my daughter used to live on that road. Short road. The applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 104.2.2 to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. Mr. Tardif is noted as representing the petitioner. And would you identify yourself and we'll move forward.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I'm Paul Tardif. I'm an attorney in Yarmouth Port, and I do represent the petitioner, who I believe was trying to get on by Zoom, so he may be here. And seated with me is Kieran Healy from the BSC Group, who participated in the surveying and engineering on the property. As you indicated, we are seeking to raise and replace the single-family structure that's there. This is a property in the R-25 zoning district. Just to understand where you are here, if you haven't visited the property, it's, as you go down Breezy Point Road, it's the, when you take the sharp 90-degree right, there's a large, looks like a big cul-de-sac right there. It's one of those houses that's tucked on to the cul-de-sac. The reason that's significant is that those properties are all fan out like a big piece of, like a big triangle back into the Martian. So you don't get to see a lot of that, just the front of it, but I just wanted to make sure you understood where you were. It's in R-25 zoning district. The house that's there is a one-story, single-family house with three bedrooms, and it was built in approximately 1954. It also has a detached shed. The lot itself contains over 45,000 square feet, but as I indicated, because of the marsh and the river and some wetlands there, we're left with 6,455 square feet of upland. The property is surrounded, as I said, by vegetated wetlands, a coastal bank, and sits in flood zone AE elevation 12. The house is approximately 8.1 feet from the easterly side boundary and nine feet from the westerly boundary, so pretty centered. It does comply with the front and the rear setbacks. Lot coverage is currently at 21%. The height regulations are also met, and you'll be happy to know we do have those on the plans, Mr. Chairman. There is a Title V septic system on the property, which is capable of handling the three bedrooms on the site, and that system will remain in place. Proposal is to take that house out and also the shed and to construct a two-and-a-half story, single-family dwelling with, again, three bedrooms. The new footprint will be almost identical to the old footprint, except that the new structure is going to be, the new structure itself, the house, is going to be 9.1 feet from the westerly boundary. It's going to be built on, like a crawl space slab. It'll be three inches further on the easterly boundary to the house, and it's going to, I believe, retain the 8.1 feet from the easterly boundary to those stairs leading to the deck and the back. So again, it's really not moving very much. It is getting better slightly if you are keeping score, but it's relatively the same footprint. Due to the environmental issues affecting the property, the house will comply with the flood zone requirements, with the bottom of the joists being at 13.1 feet. The basement will be equipped with smart vent, flood vents, and will remain unfinished. Will not house any mechanicals there. The average grade at street is 5.1 feet, and the structure will be 34.9 feet to the ridge, as shown on the plans. I think it's A4 is the plan, I believe. So all the calculations are on there. Lot coverage will increase just slightly to 23%, but it's still going to be below the 25% maximum threshold. So the project has been vetted by both the Yarmouth Board of Health, and there is a memo, I believe, in the file that indicates that the septic system that is currently serving the property will remain as long as it's a three-bedroom home. It's also been vetted by the Yarmouth Conservation Commission, and both of those boards approve the plans. The Conservation Commission adding a 144-square-foot area of mitigation plantings that's shown on the plan. As long as that is completed, that, they have approved the plan. So we are seeking that special permit under 104.3.2. You've seen the plans. Obviously, the house is beautiful. It's going to be a little higher than it is currently, but again, I think there's a number of houses, I believe, houses either on either side or close to on either side are at least two and a half stories in height. And inevitably, as we've discussed in several hearings recently, this is going to be the way of the future, unfortunately, with the flood zones and these houses getting older and older. So again, the setbacks, we are improving them slightly. That's not going to create any new nonconformities. Title V septic system will be utilized. And I guess the entire plan was really designed to address the environmental situation at the property, to be very sensitive to it. So I think this is going to be less detrimental to the neighborhood, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. We hope you agree. If you have any questions, we're here to answer them. And I believe, and again, I want to say Mr. Hamel is on, but if not, we can hopefully answer those questions for him.
Are we able to bring him on?
Let's see him.
Oh, okay.
I know his representative is here, but I don't...
Oh, okay. She can't speak back.
This is John Goodrich. Systems...
Is she...
He's part of this project, but he's not going to really speak.
Can we unmute her, please? If she's...
I'm here.
...presenting. Yeah. All right, good. Hello. So what do you have to tell us?
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Oh, don't want to speak. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, he's just there in case we have questions.
Yep.
Good enough. Mr. Mantoni, do you have any questions of our petitioner or his representative?
No, I don't have any questions. It looks nice. It looks like a nice project.
Very good. Mr. Igo?
No, it's pretty straightforward. I think it's fairly consistent with what's been going on in the neighborhood for a while. The other houses surrounding it seem to be of consistent size and design.
Thank you. Mr. Frapery?
I just want to clarify that the elevation, the 34.9 feet that you have, that goes from the average street height, is that correct, all the way down?
Yes.
What's it, is it raised? The raised in the front is for septic?
Were you...
Is that what's in the front? Is the septic system?
Septic is raised in the front, yes.
Why it's raised?
Yes.
Is it raised compared to other lots? That's what I was wondering.
Correct. But the first floor is at the minimum that we can put it based on the flood zone. So even though it's raised, it's the minimum we can place that.
And as far as parking goes, it looks like it's this half circle or whatever it is, they have two parking spaces in front, or...
Correct, yeah. Everybody, everybody in the circle parks on that shell parking area.
Is it just shared parking? Is that what it is? Because...
Yeah, everybody just parks in front of their own properties.
Tight. That's what I was wondering. All right. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
On the plan, the solid line going around the rear of the property, what's that, a cement retaining wall or something?
Oh, it's the hay bale line required. Straw wattle line. There is no walls on the backside other than the building itself.
So that straight kind of darker line is...
Yes.
Just inside of the lot line on the sides and...
Yeah, if you look the bottom left-hand side, it says proposed straw wattle.
Sorry, where again?
On the left-hand side of that area that's dark that you mentioned.
Yeah, from the BSC Group engineer.
It's actually presented, it's actually printed on the lot 45. You see it below? All right. So the, the new encroachment on the easterly bound line, boundary because of the stairway, I guess, is 8.1 feet now to the sideline as opposed to 10.8 that it might have been before. Is that right?
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
The existing stairs that are there are also 8.1. There's stairs underneath my darker line, shall we say, the existing stairs. So they're both at 8.1. And then the 10.8 is the existing building, and the 11.0 is the proposed building corner.
Okay, so there are existing stairs there.
Yes, of the existing deck that's underneath.
So there's no further encroachment?
There is no further...
On the sidelines, okay.
So it's a brand-new...
I mean, it's an awfully, awfully nice-looking house. And yes, that's happening in lots around the area, but boy, it's a big house for a little lot. Especially when you look at it from the back, and it appears to be four stories high, and which I guess it is, looking at the proposed dwelling on the little thing here, I guess it's actually a very, is it a very deep kind of, I know you have to build it up for flood zone, regs and so forth, but does that leave you with a, I know it's not going to be finishable, but does it leave you with a big basement?
There is, first of all, a basement isn't allowed in a flood zone, but the area underneath there is going to be very similar to a basement. It just can't be used for either utilities or anything in that manner. You can't even finish anything in there.
But somebody can store there or have a workshop or whatever, and it looks to me like it's got a, probably a 10-foot...
No, it can't even have power down there. I mean, it's, it's got to be, everything has got to be above elevation.
Is it a new foundation?
So then, yes, yes.
So looking at the back view of the prop, of the house, I mean, it's got windows down there and a double door. I mean, it really, you look at the back view of this, and it's, you know, it's a four-story house. And yes, I know it's three and a half, and it meets guidelines and so forth, but it's really stretching things to the max and then some, I think, and especially in terms of how it looks from the rear. And I mean, if it was ever a case of overbuilding a tiny site, and believe me, I'm usually one that doesn't mind that so much, but this is a huge house when you look at it from the rear anyways. And now I know some of that's because of the flood zone, and I know it's what you have to do. I think it's a pretty house. I don't have any real qualms about it, but...
The back does look big, but... The back does look big, but it still complies with the building height regulation.
Just barely by what? Half a foot?
By less, but it does comply. It was designed to comply.
And the lot does slope down, too. I mean, that's the topography. We're not creating that, and, you know, you can see where the, where the house is in relation to the back of the lot. I don't even think the back of the lot is on the plan because it goes so far back to...
I mean, I know there's just marsh and the run pond in back, so it's not like you're towering over another house in back, which is, which is, which is good. I guess I would have some concern as to whether any of the butters, do you have any butters? Are there any butters letters, or are the butters noncommunicating on this or in favor or against?
We had an butters letter for the Conservation Commission. We didn't get to sit down to this board, but we did have one for the Conservation Commission, one of the butters, so.
And that was positive?
That was positive, yes.
Yes, that's all I got.
So, I think it's a very handsome house, too, and I certainly appreciate that the lot slopes, but I can also see Mr. Martin's concerns from the back. And that's not really our purview, though, as long as it's, the highest point is within the proper, below the proper 35 feet. I do have a couple of questions, though. I got a site plan in front of me by BSC Group, and on it, it shows a driveway, and it seems, I think that's a driveway. Am I right?
It's actually, no, it looks like a driveway, but it's actually walls on two different properties. There's no driveway onto the property. Nobody, nobody comes onto the property.
So, it's a house with no parking on the property?
Correct. The septic system covers the entire front yard, and as it does with all of these properties.
Have you asked for that relief?
We haven't asked for the relief because it exists, the condition exists today.
What condition exists?
The parking.
They park in the cul-de-sac.
It happens that people park there, but I don't think the condition exists. It exists because people park there. This is a road, right? It's a taken road?
No, it's not. The section of, if you look at the...
Who plows it?
Nobody. The neighbors plow this section. The public road is in this line right here, and it says "public," and then this area right here is private.
The cul-de-sac is private?
The cul-de-sac is private, yes, where the shells are.
Oh, and I guess you can park there if everybody agrees. That's amazing. Now, I'm kind of curious on the same plan. What's the river called back there?
It's just a run pond. Run pond that runs into...
Yeah, I live down on it, and I can't, I've never known it to be called the river. That's why I'm asking. Not a navigable waterway, anyway, huh? We can agree on that.
Correct, but it actually, thankfully, it's not close enough to be an issue for us, but it does, it does carry riverfront criteria from a conservation point of view of 200 feet, and even though there are parts of it that are only two feet wide, it still can carry a 200-foot buffer in that area.
So, now that you've helped me with the parking issue, I have no other questions. And I think it's a very nice property. I think it's a very nice use and improvement on this particular site, so we'll see what the public has to say. Does anybody in the audience care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone at the lectern, and let's hear what you have to say. Does anyone in our audience care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, come to the microphone, tell us where you live, and let's hear what you say. And we see none. So, we close it off to the public's input on this petition, and open it up to board discussion, perhaps a motion, after some deliberations and a vote. So, who wants to go first tonight? Mr. Martin, I guess, huh?
Well, there's been some other rebuilds that are quite large on those lots. I mean, I, again, I think it's just kind of a towering house on us. Small lot with very meager setbacks. On the other hand, it does meet general criteria. It's not getting any more nonconforming, other than the height from what's there now. And certainly a nice-looking house and an attraction to the community, I think, and the neighbors don't seem to know about or care about the fact that it's going to be real high, then I guess I can live with it.
All right. Mr. Frapri.
I concur with what Mr. Martin said. My one, my one of my concerns was the parking. It is a bigger house. You wonder how many cars they're going to have. It is very narrow in front, right in front of the lot, so it doesn't look like it can fit more than two cars or so, so I would be concerned about, about the summertime, they start bringing in family, et cetera, and it's going to be pretty tight, so parking would be a concern I'd have. But other than that, it's a really nice, nice design. Very, it is a big house from the back especially, but other than that, it's a nice design.
Mr. Igo.
I do agree with Dick. I do, I do think it looks a little large from the back. If you put your hand over that walkout area, though, I think it comes in scale a little bit more.
Yeah.
That is just a walkout area.
Under two.
I think it is very consistent, though, with what's being built here in the neighborhood, and with the flood zone, it's been represented by the petitioner. Everything's got to be built up for that. That area in question, Breezy Point Road, the private area, that is specifically for the houses that are right there in that little cul-de-sac area. I don't even know why it's called Breezy Point Road. I don't think it's ever been used by anybody on the road, and it's been there forever. But I do think they meet the criteria of my law. I don't think this structure's going to be substantially more detrimental than the structures that are surrounding it, so I would recommend the board to approve it, and I plan on supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mantani.
I'd agree with Sean. I don't really have much more to add. I mean, with regards to the parking, nothing has changed. I mean, it's the same as it has been, so whether they improve the house or not, the parking is going to remain the same, so I don't really have an issue with that at all. In, with regards to the height, I mean, who's going to see it back there?
I guess it is the same number of bedrooms as it was.
It's supposed to be bedroom, yes.
So, is that it?
Yeah.
Well, you know, I have a very great concern for the parking, to be honest with you, and you're representing to this board that the municipal plowing never occurs on that particular cul-de-sac?
Correct. As far as I know, no plowing, plus it's shells, and shells are incredibly difficult to plow, but I don't believe that happens in any case.
So, I could see this house on Airbnb and 10 people coming down to enjoy the summer down on that road for a week and have 10 cars out front as they come from all different directions. You know, it's just, it's a problem, right? And it's a problem, I guess, you and your neighbors have to fix, but, or to pay attention to, but, you know, lots are supposed to have, residential laws aren't, are supposed to have two parking spaces, aren't they? Two dedicated parking spaces on-site? And your, your running description on this property doesn't include rights to that cul-de-sac, does it?
Probably just some...
Deed running description?
Probably just easement rights to utilize it for access, and I bet you, historically, it is used exactly the way it is going to be used, which is people are going to park there, they're going to park the way this house is, that is there now, so I don't see any change. I think a problem would have occurred by now if there was going to be, but I think they work it out.
Well, I think you and I disagree on that point, but because it's been there, it's therefore somehow grandfathered there, and, you know, and I don't believe that's true.
I think historically, if my memory serves me, because I did grow up down there a couple streets over, I think that used to be kind of a cottage colony right there before they started to redevelop those houses. They were small, and I think they were all owned by one person. He used to use those as summer rentals.
Yep.
And that, I think Walter O'Connell might have owned those. Maybe not him. I know he owns some of the neighbors. Dick, you know him?
Yeah, I do. I knew Walter. He was on Braddock Street, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think those were a group of small cottages, and I think that area that says Breezy Point Road, the private section there, that was used as a parking area, so historically it's been used as that. None of these lots have driveways, correct?
The one next to it, some do, yeah.
Look, I'm going to support it if the other board members do. I'm just alarmed in that these very well-populated areas, they can't take a car on the property because of an existing sewer septic system, and parks on an area where a fire truck might need to come down and can't access it because there are two cars out front. I mean, to me, it's just a problem that I hope somehow gets resolved by the neighbors in tandem with this petition. I do want to read into the record, please, the Zoning Board of Appeals letter from Karen Brooks, who is the conservation agent, and she says, "As at its December 1/22 meeting, the Conservation Commission held a hearing to review a notice of intent for 108 Breezy Point Road for a proposed raise and replace of a single-family dwelling and land subject to coastal storm flowage and the buffer zones to a bordering vegetated wetland and coastal bank. The commission voted to approve the proposed work with special conditions, and an order of conditions was issued on December 14/22. The DEP file is, has, it gives its number and the approval, approved plan, rather, is entitled Plan of Land 108 Breezy Point Road, South Yarmouth, dated 11/8/22. You understand that the conservation's conditions would become part of the conditions of this grant if, in fact, the board deems it appropriate to vote in favor." Yeah? Anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'll move to approve petition 4999 for a special permit as requested.
Could you add subject to the condition?
Subject to Conservation Commission restrictions and order of conditions.
Okay. Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman, if for discussion?
Sure.
Should we have a condition somehow that it showed two dedicated spaces?
Well, I don't know how you do that, because the running description of the property that's before us has no stated rights to that cul-de-sac. It's right here, if anybody wants to read it. So, I don't know how we then demand or require them to have parking on land they don't own.
It does, I mean, the bylaw does ask for two spaces dedicated.
Somebody talking? Oh, okay. I thought it was somebody from the screen.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, well, now we can, yeah.
You speaking?
I'm the owner, John Hamill. There's actually three spaces in front of the house.
Can you speak to the rights of that space, or?
No, but it's just been there for 25, 24 years that I've been there, and there's not a parking issue. Yeah, 4th of July, the neighbors all have to sort of look at each other and say, okay, well, who's got guests, whatever, but there's actually three parking spaces in front of the house, and it's been there forever. I've been, I've been there for 20-something years.
Well, again, respectfully, I don't think you own the land, so therefore you can't dedicate parking spaces, but if you want to take as a condition...
But I have space for three, is what I'm saying.
Sir? I was speaking. Sir?
Okay.
I was speaking.
Sorry. I get a delayed back, I'm sorry.
So, you know, if you want to tell us that you're going to dedicate three spots out in front of this property, and that, and just call it that, a condition, that you're going to dedicate three spots for the use of this property, it's fine by me. It may not be fine by your neighbors, though, so we can add that as a condition. Right? He's stating he has three parking spots, that we condition that he maintained three parking spots in front of this property.
It looks like the septic retaining wall is already on the cul-de-sac. Correct?
Correct, yes. If I could, Mr. Chairman, what he meant there was that the frontage allows him to have the width required for three parking spaces, which is what he's historically parked on. Not that he's requiring it or looking to add it to this approval if we were so to get it, but it's just that's the current condition, is that the parking is wide enough to fit three spaces there.
Well, respectfully, this is an frontage, right? It's not a public road. It's an frontage on a public road.
It's footage on a private road.
Pardon me?
It's on a private road.
What's a pri, what's the private road? The cul-de-sac?
The cul-de-sac is a private road. In the '40s, when the subdivision was created, Breezy Point included this cul-de-sac. Later on, when the town took the road, they did not take the cul-de-sac, they just took the 40-foot layout of the roadway, so this was land remaining, basically.
I think we can end the controversy by just, would you agree, Dick, to add a condition that they maintain three parking spots in front of this property?
I don't know if I can, would do that, because I don't know if I can do it, because I don't know how they're going to maintain parking spaces on property that they don't own.
That's the dilemma.
And they're there, and I, I know, I've seen people park all over that circle, including kind of in the middle of it in the past, so, I mean, I guess people are going to park wherever they're going to park, and the fact that there isn't one there, and the newer septic system that's there that's raised in the front has cement walls and takes up essentially every inch of space that they might otherwise use for parking, I don't, I don't know that there's any recourse.
Well, anybody else want to talk on the subject or move along to a second? On the one condition statement?
I would just suggest that we observe the history of the property and the way the owners who live in this cul-de-sac have conducted themselves over many years, and that's that they seem to have adequate parking there, and it is a pretty unique piece of property. I don't think that we could really condition that he maintains three spots, because I'm not sure.
I agree that...
Who actually owns this property. But I don't think it's anybody that, I really don't know. I haven't seen a deed, a description to that piece of property. I can suggest that nobody really has an interest other than those homeowners that live right there in that cul-de-sac. I mean, it would naturally park there. No one came up on the beach and parked there. It's a little bit too far away, and I...
I guess, I guess my only concern, Sean, is that if they sell, if they sell it, what goes with it?
Well, I don't know, but I don't know if we, if we put a condition in there that runs with the land, and then they sell it, a bank attorney might look at this and say, wait a minute here, where are these parking spaces?
Well, you know, there's another way of looking at it. If the town wishes to enforce the parking requirements down there, they're going to go down and enforce it.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter that it's private land or not, I guess.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's just such a quandary, and we see this more often than you'd think, this kind of an issue, you know, because there are so many of these lots around that area. All right, so, anybody want a second?
John, second. Yeah, did you say?
Oh, you did? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, John, I forgot. Yeah, so there's just on the one condition, subject to the conditions as, the conditions as determined by CONCON. Is that right?
Yep.
All right, so let's do a roll call vote. John?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And Jay?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that carries unanimously. I'll look forward to a draft decision, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
Thank you.
So, now our agenda brings us to, don't wander too far, our petition 5007, that of Ekatrina and Family LLC, Jay Imid, trustee of the Cedars of Lebanon Trust. Property location is at 272, 20, I'm sorry, 1272, 1276, and 1282, Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. That property being in a zoning district, B2, and, and road district. The applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 202.5, 203.5, 301.41, 301.44, 301.46, 301.8, 303.55 of our zoning bylaws individually or in the alternative, Section 411, road, for for H2, H6, H10, and A12 uses to redevelop the property and demolish existing eight buildings on site and construct a gasoline filling station with four dispensers, overhead steel canopy, two fuel tanks, storage tanks, and an 8,000-square-foot mixed-use building with convenience store and drive-through on the first floor and four residential apartments above. Before you go forward, can you give us some idea of, for the people at home, where 1272, 76, 82, Route 28 is?
Sure. For the record, I'm Paul Tardif, I'm an attorney in Yarmouth Port, and seated with me is Hal Chuba, I'm the engineer. This property, I guess you could say it's across the street from where the DeAngelo's used to be on Route 28. So, it's really further, it's closer to the bridge than the 99, I would say. So, okay. So, there's a lot going on with this application, obviously.
That's an understatement.
So, and it's been a long road. We've had several variations of this plan come about. We got to the planning board a couple times, but we are finally here. So, we're happy about that. The property is in the B2, the HMOD1, and the road zoning districts, and consists currently three separate abutting properties. The first is at 1272, Route 28, which until recently was improved with a pottery store. It was overgrown with trees. I think the trees were growing through the roof. That was built in approximately 1930, and that lot contains 11,936 square feet. The structure was recently removed, and the lot was graded. As I indicated, there was a...
Excuse me. We have our technical supervisor joining us for a moment. He should be recognized for doing a wonderful job in videography of these various motion hearings for the town. Please go ahead, I apologize.
That's fine. The second parcel is at 1276, Route 28, and that is improved with five separate residential structures, which are scattered throughout the lot. They were built in approximately 1936 and positioned so that four of the houses encroach into the rear set-back of the property. The lot contains 21,780 square feet, and the houses are rented and have been for many years. Of the five residential units on the site, one is a two-bedroom home, and four are one-bedroom dwellings for a total of six bedrooms. The third property is at 1282, Route 28, and is currently improved with a gas station, convenience store, and a canopy, which was built in 1942. And that lot contains 16,117 square feet. The canopy over the two gas pumps is located 3.1 feet from Route 28. The lots which contain the rental apartments and the gas station, those were created by a plan dated 1953. And the property at 1272, with the pottery store, does appear at a plan for the first time in '81, but the description is historical, going back to 1945 or even before that. The existing collective structures encroach into the front yard set-back, as I indicated, 3.1 feet on the front from the canopy and into the rear set-back in several different locations with those houses. But the one structure that's closest is located 6.8 feet from the rear residential zone. Again, this is on the north side of Route 28, and it abuts residential uses directly to its rear and a business to the east and west. The lots, when put together, will be approximately 50,000 square feet of area. The lot coverage currently is at 12.2 percent, and the height of the tallest structure on the site is approximately 20 feet. There are currently five separate septic systems on the combined properties, and there are four curb cuts along Route 28. And overall, these lots are, I guess, poorly designed for today's standards, and the dated buildings are not attractive, very functional, and they're starting to, well, they're well past showing their age. The proposal is to combine the lots into one. As I indicated, the old pottery store has been demolished already. The existing gas station and convenience store and the canopy, as well as the five rental units, will all be raised and replaced with a new, less non-conforming canopy, a building containing a drive-through coffee shop, a convenience store, and a gas station on the first floor of a building, and four two-bedroom dwelling units on the second floor. The combination of the lots will create, as I indicated, a lot of approximately 50,000 square feet. New gas tanks on site will consist of the two double-walled fiberglass fuel storage tanks. Building coverage will be 12.3 percent. Lot coverage will increase to 57.8 percent. The rear set-back, instead of the 6.8 feet, will now be 41 feet. The front set-back, instead of 3.1, I think I said, or 3.3? Three feet? Will be 11 feet. And one of the curb cuts will be eliminated. There'll also be one brand-new septic system that services the entire property instead of the five that you have there currently. And, Mr. Chairman, you did indicate, when you read the notice, that we are seeking, there are two different forms of relief we're seeking in the alternative. One, obviously, is the road bylaw under Section 411, and we've been proceeding through design review, site plan review, Community Economic Development Committee, Planning Board, and now here with that plan. We are also, with that road bylaw, our intention is to get one special permit. There are eight small variations in this lot that we would need relief for, but they're all...
Need a special permit as well, right?
We need a special permit for, if we were gonna go at those individually, we would need a special permit for each of them.
So, can you speak to that? Are you properly before us on the, under road? Or what's your take on that?
Yes, we are properly here under road. We've followed every last step. We do have the recommendation, which is what the bylaw calls it, a recommendation of the planning board to proceed to this board for a special permit, a road special permit.
So, we're gonna be applying, on your theory of how we're proceeding here tonight, we're gonna be applying the mandatory criteria as set forth in, what is it, 401.5?
Yes. That's, that's... Yeah, there's actually two. There's mandatory criteria, and there's also the criteria that the planning board followed as well, which is general criteria. But we also have asked for relief in the alternative, for relief from those eight variations that we are looking for relief from. And if we can address those first, I think we can maybe do away with the road bylaw altogether. So, if you have the plan in front of you, you see the location of the building, you see the location of the pumps, the floor plans of the houses above, the drive-through window, the greenery, the... It's a beautiful plan. It has changed over the time, but with all the input from all the different departments which you have in front of you is the final plan that we would like to have. The first request for relief would be for the building front set-back. And as I indicated, we are currently at 3.1 feet with the current canopy over the gas pumps. And what we wanted to do is, we wanted to move that building, we initially had it back further, with parking all in front and not in the rear or on the side. And also, by doing that, we pushed the drive-through window or the stacking lane behind the building, which was kind of close to the residential zone. So, under road, which the, and the road bylaw encourages these lots to be pushed forward toward the street, more of a village-type of feel to it. So, we did that and have positioned it, as shown in the plan, at 11 feet from the road. So, again, this is not a new encroachment. We are actually improving the current encroachment, but that would be relief in the form of a special permit, number one. Number two would be parking within the set-back. You do have your site plan there, and you can see that all of the parking lots, the parking spaces, are located either to the side or to the rear of this building, which is what is required. However, there is a section of the bylaw that does say that all parking spaces must also be out of the front set-back, which is 30 feet along Route 28. There are, I believe, two spaces there that are in the 30-foot set-back, but they are located to the side of the building. And again...
What's the sheet with the parking?
As I write there.
What page?
Sheet number four.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I have a large plan. Would I be able to put that on the easel? Would that be better for the board if I put the plan on the easel?
I think it'd be great, true.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd get down to the very bottom of the biggest set, 419.
Number four is the same as this one.
Oh, I see. I got it right.
The big one is.
Yeah.
The big one is the same thing.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're discussing these, this is the...
I want people at home to see this, so...
I think it's on that.
Can you try to just, okay, good. And you have a pointer?
Do.
Okay, good. Go right ahead, then.
So, this is the front of the building, right?
And excuse me, anybody in our audience who would like to walk up here and see what they're pointing to, please feel free to do it, okay? I just ask you not to have a conversation, just come up and look.
So, this is the front, proposed front of the building right now. This is Route 28, right along here. These two spaces right here are the ones that are within the set-back, but they are to the side of the building, so we would be seeking a special permit relief for that.
How many total spaces, though?
I'm sorry?
How many total parking spaces?
21 provided, 21 required.
Okay.
Yeah. And just so you'll, and it sort of goes into my next point, number three, which is the in-lot trees. You can see there really are two different sections for parking. There's the parking for the business here, and then you have some parking spaces over here for the residents that are divided. Although they are on the same lot, they are really basically two separate parking areas. And so, we do have, we do have two in-lot trees provided in this section, but because of the number of parking spaces on the total lot, we would need one more in-lot tree, which we're missing, and so we would need relief from that as well.
And are there dedicated spots for the people that are dwelling in the apartments?
Yes, they are, right over here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Number four would be the drive-through buffer distance to the residential zone. What 301.8 talks about is that any drive-through created needs to be 100 feet from any residential zone, not just the house, but the zone. And again, we have residential lots located right here. And you can see the stacking line is here. So, we are within 100 feet. The bylaw does call for a special permit if we cannot meet that. We've done some scaling on that, and we are approximately 42 feet from the nearest developed residential property line and approximately 135 feet to the house itself. Now, I want to show you that there are really three, three things you want to look at. Right here is a residential lot. There is a road here that comes up from forest, wood, wood road. And then there's another undeveloped lot here that is also in the residential zoning district. This is an unbuildable lot and cannot be improved. This is the road, and this is the residential lot. So, from the, right here is where we're gonna have the menu board, and it's approximately, to that corner right there is 42 feet. I also want to point out, too, that these are B2 zoning districts, lots right here. And where I'm pointing right here, that's a B1 zoning district. And that B1 zoning district goes all the way down that street. If you look on the zoning map, it goes north. So, just so you'll know, that that property is surrounded by business properties. Number five would be the front landscape buffer. And you can see, this dark line is where the road layout taking is. However, the actual road is here. There is a sidewalk existing here, all along, and it goes all the way along all these properties on either side. All these properties have developed and improved and greened up the area between the sidewalk and their property, even though it's not on their lot. We have approximately 10 feet or 11 feet here. Bigger sections here, obviously, meet here. But we would need relief here where it needs a 20-foot buffer.
So, are you suggesting that there's gonna be plantings out in the street taking, out on Route 28 taking?
It's there now, correct. Yep.
You're not taking land from the state by adverse possession?
No, we are, we are planning to improve that and make it look just like everyone else along Route 28.
I'm sorry to keep interrupting you.
No, that's fine. Number six would be the multifamily use. Again, under zoning bylaw, Section 202.5, that is an A12 use. But again, as I indicated, we currently have five separate dwelling units on the property. It is a multifamily use currently. We would just be moving them, actually, we would be reducing it down to four, increasing the number of bedrooms, however, and putting that on the second floor. Number seven would be the gas station use, which, again, is in place under 202.5. That's an H6 use. And we would just be moving it, again, because we're combining lots, we'd be moving it along into different sections and different lots that we're combining. And then finally, the signs in the front and right-side elevations. Currently, again, the gas pumps are here, just to orient you. The main entrance to get in once you pay and go into the convenience store, there's a door in the middle here, and there is a sign above that door, and that's allowed. And then on this, on the Route 28 side, there is a proposed sign on this side and a proposed sign against the building itself on this side for the co-brand. Again, we have two things going on inside the building, convenience store and a gas, and the coffee shop. So, we would have two signs here. So, we'd need relief for that as well. Again, because the lot is more parallel to Route 28 rather than back, and we moved that, we had to put the building this way instead of in the back because of the parking, that's the need for those signs.
If I could just on the signs, have you delineated somewhere here the size of those signs that you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay. I did see a legend here.
Yeah, there is a plan, and I think the size itself would meet. It's just that there are numbers, we can only have one on perpendicular to each one.
Signs that you're proposing, do you see the allowable 919 size?
Yes. They're on...
919?
Nine.
Hey, while we're on this topic, can you answer one for me, too, please?
Try.
Who runs the coffee shop?
Willby Dunkin' Donuts.
So, there's no separation between the coffee shop and the convenience store?
It'll be open between the two, yeah. Just similar to, I think, a few other places on 28.
It's running right down the street at Speedway, I think.
There is, right there on the corner, right, four corners. So, again, that's the relief that we would be looking for. If the board wants to discuss these special permits and bifurcate that from the road, we can do that. It's up to you, Mr. Chairman. I'll do whatever.
Could you just articulate them in short form, one sentence? You're looking for relief on what, for what?
The front set-back.
Yep. For those two spots.
The front set-back, so the how, the building is...
Overall.
Yeah, overall. Parking for those two spaces in the front set-back, even though they're on the side. We're short one in-lot tree. The drive-through distance to the residential zone, we don't meet the 100. The front landscape buffer, the two pre-existing uses, and then the signs. I think that's one sentence. With commas and...
Okay, thank you. I apologize for interrupting. Well, I mean, I'm gonna, let's poll the board. Should we look at this as just the second phase of the road application? Or as presented to us now, what is it? What is it, total of six?
Eight.
Eight. Eight special permits needing relief. They're going to each be taken in an order, of course, where everybody can weigh in on them individually or look to the road criteria. I mean, either way, it's... We're going to be here for a bit.
I think it's better for you if you proceed under road.
I think so, too.
I mean, isn't it easier for you to meet the criteria under road?
It could be, but again, what we're asking for, what we're seeking are special permits to begin with. And if we can get these special permits, we don't have to deal with the road criteria and the building doesn't change. It's been designed under road, it's been approved under road with the planning board, and with these forms of relief, we'll be able to build that, and the town still gets their road project.
Relative to the signage, don't you need a variance for that?
I don't think so. I think on the co-branded signs, I think it's a special permit.
What I mean, were you looking for two signs, different signs on the face of the building?
Correct.
I think you'd need a variance for that, wouldn't you?
I think it's a co... Because it's a co-brand... I'll take another look, but I think...
But putting that one aside...
Sure.
Doesn't the road give us a little more flexibility in granting something? Seems to me that that's the... If they want to move forward, that would be a lot.
But I mean, even proceeding under road, we'd still take these individually into consideration.
Sure.
Yeah, and I think each one needs to be weighed on the merit of... Because under road, you still have to meet the criteria of a special permit.
We do, but it's one special permit.
And the benefit outweighs the detriment, correct?
Right.
Right.
Which is a little bit different than when we take it up as a special permit only.
Correct.
I think the bar is a little lower, maybe.
Are you suggesting, then, that we proceed under the road? Because it's fine by me, that's how we're here, in part.
I think so. I mean, I think it's probably better for them. I think they can probably make an argument. I think it would be easier for them to argue under road than it would be to take these specifically.
So...
But I'm... You're the...
Yeah. Here's... To answer your first question, under 303.13, it does allow, under Section 303.5.53, a special permit if we cannot meet that. That's the co-branded. So, that's under 303.13.
But the co-branded, but isn't that co-branded on one sign?
With one owner.
Isn't that for a business center?
It says... No, it's singly occupied or co-branded business location. Business centers is 303.5.5.3. It's a different section.
Okay, so you're suggesting you can...
But it's also a special permit if it is that, by the way, because, yeah, that's what this says.
All right.
So, here's what I'd like to do. If we could address those eight, and I know it's a lot, under the special permit criteria, okay? And we can grant it that way, then again, we don't need the road relief, which would put...
The challenge.
The Brad Goodwin issue away.
Oh, I see.
That's the reason why, to get rid of road.
Well, I think there's some more logic to it, that we're going to have to deal with each one separately in any event as we consider the grant of special permit. So, no matter what form we take it in, we're going to be talking about all eight of these individually. So, since you're asking us to go individually, let's move forward individually, okay? So, you know, this is a very complex matter before us this evening, and we're going to do our best to keep it within a time slot or maybe come back at another time, but in any event, moving it along as quickly as we can would be helpful because there are two petitioners behind you, okay? And with respect to that, go through the first one, and we'll discuss the first one with the public, okay?
So, the building front setback, currently at 3.1. The building we're proposing is at 11 feet.
11 feet from what?
From the road layout, the actual boundary. But with the vegetation, it's further, but we're not arguing that. It's 11 feet from the boundary, where we are 3.1 right now.
So, it's less non-conforming?
It's less, that's right.
So, you'd be decreasing...
Correct.
Well, what this says here, and I'm just looking at page four again of your sheet four. I can't tell that that's 11 feet from the road layout.
It's...
It's not there, yeah.
Yeah, it's on there.
Mr. Chair.
It's on the light green grass in front of the building.
11.0.
Yep.
And how much from the lot line to the... Is that inclusive of the lot line?
That is to the lot line, not the light green grass.
The distance there to the building.
That's 11... I guess I'm... From the building to the lot line is 11 feet.
From the building to the lot line is 11 feet.
Correct.
The 11 feet is noted on Massachusetts state property.
Because there's plantings that...
Yeah. There's about another 20 feet or so on the state property of grass or whatever.
So, the 11 is referencing the dark green, but it's on the light green.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
It's the labeling.
I want you to set at the mic, though.
Yes, for the record, Hal Chuba, I'm a consulting engineer.
Sure.
This is the labeling. So, the label of the 11 feet is on the state, shown on the state property. That's the 11 feet is from the right-of-way line. That's the state line. Actually, the state owns that right-of-way is probably about...
60 feet wide.
60 feet.
Yeah, 60 feet wide. So, the lighter green that you see, that's the existing vegetation within the state right-of-way to the lot line. We're not touching that. We're adding another almost 11 feet to the building. Between the building and the state right-of-way is 11 feet. The setback is 11 feet.
All right, and I don't want to start a frenzy here, but I do want to tell you, I sat on a committee to talk about the development of that portion of Route 28 to its full 50 feet width. So, now, you're building within that 50-foot width, right? And the only reason that hasn't been done yet is because Massachusetts Transportation can't fund it.
We're actually not building in the right... We're just going to green it. There's an existing sidewalk, and it's in between the sidewalk and the lot line. We are just going to make it look nice until the state decides what they want to do, but we're not putting any structures in there.
Have you asked the state of Commonwealth of Massachusetts? If you can...
Not, Mr. Chair. I think there's a confusion here.
There's no confusion. You've got a lot line, and you're in the road taking.
We're not. We're not touching the... We're not touching... We're not doing any work within the state right-of-way. We're leaving that... It's already green. We're leaving that green within the state. We're adding our green within our property between the right-of-way and the proposed building.
Building a concrete sidewalk out in front?
Oh, yeah. That will have to apply that... The curb cuts, it's going to be within the state property.
You've got to go to the state to get rid of a curb cut, right?
We do that all the time, Mr. Chair, yes. Any work within any curb cut modification has to be through Mass DOT, yes.
I think, Dick, you sat on the same... Did you at the same committee about widening that to the full 50-feet layout?
No, I don't want it widened.
Well, you may not want it widened. You may not want it widened, but other people in town do.
The layout there is such that it could accommodate widening of one sort or another, yes.
Yeah.
And at that point, you would lose what I guess is about 20 feet of grass or up to that, should the state decide to do that, and the state doesn't decide to do much, I'm afraid. So, we're adding 11 feet to what's there beyond what the state already owns, and more so actually in front of the other part of the building and other areas within the site. So, I think it's actually greening it up pretty good.
Looks like there's two structures that are currently fairly close, and this will reduce it to one and further back. That's kind of the way I see it.
There's one of the structures, one of the houses is pretty close there, yeah. I mean, there's hardly any buffer at all there now.
Stay directed. We're on one issue right now, the special permit request for relief on the front buffer. Okay. Does any member of the board have a specific question concerning that requested relief? And I have none because you're telling me... I'm still confused. I'm looking at a lot line, and then below the lot line, I'm seeing 11.0. Am I right?
Yeah, let me explain.
Sir?
Okay.
Stay at the microphone, please.
Sure.
I know you're anxious to tell me all about it. Let me get my question out before you answer it, okay?
Sure.
So, if it's 11.0 feet, that goes to the end of the side, to the edge of the sidewalk, right?
No. 11 foot, it's just written there.
It's just written there.
Yeah.
See this right here? You're looking at the small one. See that line right there?
Yeah.
From there to there, that's 11 feet.
I don't care about that. All I care about is how far are they going out into the town's layout, State's layout?
Not at all.
None. The only thing they're going to do out there is probably green it up.
Well, with all due respect, you do agree that everything below the lot line is state property, right?
Yes.
Okay, now, at least it's clarified for me because I just don't think it's right. But moreover, we've tried to get away from another one of the requested relief you've had, which is to allow for front parking. But in any event, look, let's move it along. Does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this specific special permit? Just raise your hand. Seeing none. Does anybody care to speak in opposition to this? And then we're just going to identify him. For the record, it's Mr. Attorney Reed, and you're representing, sir.
Nancy and Scott Rayburn of 27 and 28 Briar Lane, which is the immediate northerly residential abutter, which is also in a residential zone.
Are we just addressing the front setback relief right now?
Yeah.
Or the whole, just the front setback?
Just the front setback. Yeah, we've got to go one at a time, and we've got to have one-at-a-time vote.
Well, I'm going to make one observation about the application because I frankly find this request a little confusing in terms of what I thought was coming before you under the road by law. The application does not, as I see, in any way request relief under Section 104.3.2. The application is not suggesting that they are entitled to special permits as a modification or change of a pre-existing nonconforming structure or use. That's not mentioned anywhere in the application. So, the only way they could ask for special permits for any of these things is if the bylaw itself gave you the option to grant relief by special permit. With respect to the front yard setback, which is the only thing before you right now, they're comparing the canopy setback to the proposed building setback. It was my recollection that the canopy is there by variance. So, to build a separate building, different from the canopy, which is not complying with the front yard setback, is not a special permit issue. It's a variance. The only way for you to build a building 11 feet from the front yard, front lot line, is by variance. There is a variance, I believe, in effect for the canopy. You can't transfer that to a building, which is a separate, entirely separate structure. So, there is no ability, in my opinion, for Section 203.5 for you to grant a special permit for a building which is only 11 feet from the front lot line.
Is there variance? Could I ask if they were proceeding under the road section of the bylaw, would you agree that they could then ask for relief of 11 feet?
Under the road bylaw, you have the authority to grant waivers from the front yard setback, and yes, if you met all the other criteria, you could include granting relief for the front yard setback within a road special permit.
Yeah, that doesn't exist today, though.
But not under Section 203.5.
Thank you. Well, you know, we have petitioners that stand in front of us and ask for relief, and this particular petition is representative, has suggested that we go special permit by special permit and thereby avoid the issue of the road permit. So, that's his option. Do you care to speak in specific opposition to this suggested setback?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
You cannot grant a special permit to create a new nonconformity, a building only 11 feet from the front lot line, by special permit. The only way to do that would be by variance or, in some circumstances, by changing a pre-existing nonconforming structure. They've not asked for a special permit under 104.3.2, so you can't consider that. Therefore, in my opinion, the only way for you to grant permission for a building 11 feet, a new building, 11 feet from the slot line, is by variance, which has not been requested and is not within the scope of the special permit request. So, you cannot do what they've asked.
Well, I got to tell you, every time that we've been asked to reduce front setback, we've always considered variance criteria.
And that's not been asked of you.
Looked at it as variance.
And that's not been asked of you.
He's looking for a special permit, though.
What?
They're looking for a special permit, and that's the problem, I think. They would need a variance.
No, I understand what David's saying. What I'm saying is, they asked for the special permit designation, and I understand why they're doing it. I think Mr. Reed is entirely right.
Yeah, I agree.
We've always dealt with front setback as a variance request. So, if we're going to avoid that, we're going to need to go under the road. And I think I understand the streamlining of it, and I think it's a wonderful idea, but he's right.
Okay.
Let's go to the road criteria, though.
Okay. We are also seeking a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaw, Section 411. First, that section of the zoning bylaw applies to this project because it's located in the B2 zoning district and is south of Route 6. Second, in pursuant to Section 411.3.2, the Board of Appeals may grant road district development special permit approval. And you can waive, as was indicated, certain portions of the zoning bylaw, Section 202, 203, 301, et cetera, if we can demonstrate the following. One, that we've submitted in accordance with Section 411. I think that is established. The second one is meets the criteria for the grant of a special permit, and I guess we're going to get to that, so I'd like to just put that aside for the moment. Completes the process of site plan review, which we have, and I believe you probably have site plan review notes in your package. Meet the criteria for the approval pursuant to Section 411.5. I guess we'll put that on hold for the time being. And received approval of the planning board, which we did. In order to prove the criteria has been met under 411, there are two sections that need to be addressed. Under 411.5, the first thing is the general criteria, and this is the same criteria that the planning board went through and that is also required for you to look at. All proposals are to be reviewed under these general criteria. It does remind you that the proposal need not necessarily satisfy all the criteria in order to receive the approval. We start with A, site plan review objectives pursuant to Section 103.3.1. Under 103.3.1, the site plan review objectives look to internal circulation and egress from the site, so it's more of a traffic criteria. Reasonable use is made of building location, grading, and vegetation to reduce visibility of parking areas from public ways. Adequate access to each structure for fire and service equipment is provided, which the plan does show that. Utilities and drainage serving the site provide functional service to each structure and paved areas in the same manner as required for lots within a subdivision. Fire protection provisions meet fire department regulations. I believe that they were at the site plan review and made comment, including a fire box, which will be provided. Drainage serving the site will comply with the stormwater management requirement under Section 304, which it will. The proposed development will minimize adverse environmental impacts, minimize obstruction of scenic views. I don't think there are any. Preserve unique natural and historical features. Maximize open space retention. Avoid topographic changes. Minimize removal of existing trees. I think this plan does all of that. Remember that we are swapping out five septic systems into one. We are also changing out the gas tanks.
Before you go through all of that, why you think it meets it, 411, 411.3.3, subparagraph 1A12, do you see that?
I'm sorry. Let me just get to that. Mr. Chairman, one more time, 411...
Referencing use table, use table A12.
Yes.
411.3.3, paragraph 1, with the reference... Four eleven point three point three, paragraph one, with the reference to section A twelve.
Correct.
It would seem to indicate that multifamily, uh, is almost exempt from some of these criteria, if you read it broadly. And, and I'm wondering, doesn't this, this doesn't have more than fifty percent of its use, uh, table. I mean, that square footage has, um, residential, does it?
It does.
It does?
It does, yeah. In the B-two zoning district, again, the, um, mixed-use projects shall be allowed where the residential component is not more than fifty percent of the project's total building floor area. Uh, our calculations indicate it's at forty-nine percent. Forty-nine percent for residential, fifty-one for commercial.
So you, you don't exceed the fifty percent threshold?
We do not.
So then aren't we, isn't the, this, this is the waiver limitations, and
Correct.
for what we can grant waivers for, which seems so broad here, if it's in a B-one, B-two, and, and affords mixed use. And as I remember the whole discussion about that and the changes in, in the, uh, mixed use along Route twenty-eight, it was en- encouraging very strongly within the V C O Ds, uh, a, uh, a kind of a right-up-to-the-street sort of presentation with mixed use below and residential above. Uh, so, at least in concept, I guess, that we've been through this, though, and how, not having dealt with this specifically.
Right, so, so we are not exempt from a road special permit based off of that provision, that footnote?
Okay.
Okay. You do have the site plan review notes there. Um, they were mainly positive. Um, some of the changes that were suggested have been incorporated into the plans. I believe that we meet all of those, um, objectives under one oh three point three point one. The second step would be the criteria, standards, and objectives of design review. Improving the aesthetic quality of the buildings, and I don't think there's any question, uh, in this case, that's happening. Promoting attractive and viable commercial districts. Well, this is a B-two zoning district in, in an area that needs a little invigoration. Providing a process for review of all changes in land use, appearance of structures. The objectives of design review process to preserve the natural cultural patterns and surrounding landscape when possible. We are trying to keep as many trees in those buffers that we, as we can. Encourage incorporation of public amenities, sidewalks, benches, bike racks, uh, which we are. Um, and that's some of the some of the, um, sidewalks coming, uh, off of the main sidewalk along Route twenty-eight to the, to the site. The building is encouraged to be of a style which complements and promotes traditional Cape Cod architectural styles and character with proper scale, proportion, roof pitch. Uh, traditional building materials are recommended, uh, colors, et cetera. The, uh, also identify the internal parking circulation system in a manner which will reduce curb cuts, which we are doing from four curb cuts to three. Improving landscape and traffic flow. Allow for proper turning radius and parking spaces. Encourage pedestrian uses and access. Screen trash receptacles. Minimize any accessory signage. The design review committee reviewed this project October eighteen of twenty-two, uh, in an, an advisory committee at that point, because it was a road, um, bylaw, um, special permit that we were requesting. The planning board ultimately acts as the design review committee. But with this plan, the design review committee was appreciative of the modifications we had made to a prior plan. Um, they liked the sighting of the building closer to the street, reduction in size of the building, which was bigger than, in the prior, um, prior plan. We reduced the number of pumps from, I think we had
Five.
five, and we went down to four, is it? Six to four, five to four? Uh, we widened vegetative buffers, um, with irrigation, um, included, uh, actually, that twelve seventy-two lot where it used to have the pottery store was actually added to this project from a prior, uh, plan. They felt that all the sighting and the building strategies were either not applicable to this site, or were, um, met the design standards. And in their specific comments, the design review committee did note the following, and that had to do with some, um, different tree species that will be planted. Fewer red maples, I think, was suggested. So we've had the design review committee approve it in their, in their, uh, capacity as a, you know, more of a, an advisory capacity. And then we now have the planning board that also reviewed this in their capacity, a design review committee, and approved it as well. The third criteria is the goals and purposes and objectives of this section four eleven. And again, it's the intention of the road by law to have a, a mechanism that promotes business opportunities, on one hand, but also preserves the visual side of Route twenty-eight, which is, you know, we don't have an Old King's Highway on Route twenty-eight, we have it up on six A. So this was sort of a, a give and take, a balancing act. And that's what four eleven point two talks about, is this give and take, you know, if you make this property appear a certain way, we will give you, um, relaxed regulatory requirements in the form of a special permit. The economic benefits, this is the fourth one, D, economic benefits of the proposed development. Uh, in this case, it's going to be an economic develop, uh, benefit to the town. In many ways, we're gonna have more jobs. There are gonna be, again, one septic system versus five septic systems. The, um, the five residential units on the site, of which one is a two-bedroom, and four are one-bedrooms, are gonna be, uh, done away with. We're gonna have four two-bedroom, uh, units, a total of eight bedrooms, so we're increasing the number of bedrooms, which, as we all know, we need housing. Also gonna be tax revenue, tax revenue benefits from the project. Currently, these three properties together, uh, are, are assessed at one point one million dollars. It's, um, the applicant's proposal, it's gonna probably cost them close to four million dollars. It doesn't mean that the property's gonna be worth four million dollars, I was told at the last, uh, planning board meeting. But, um, it's going to, I, I don't think you can say that, uh, putting four million dollars into this project and developing the plan in front of you is going to result in something less than one point one million dollars on that site. So there will be tax benefits as well. E is the recommendations of the site plan review team and the Community and Economic Development Committee. You have those in your packet. F is supplementary road district standards, and this goes to architectural styles, talking about historic seaside village, colonial or old Cape Cod styles with regard to the buildings. The design, the intrinsic or reproduction style value, so we're trying to make it, you know, with the twelve pitches and the, the peaks, uh, some of the materials used, the aesthetics. Uh, again, there's a balance for economic well-being and stability, economic growth and employment. So, all of those requirements have been vetted. Um, I think that the plan does speak to that itself, and I think you can look at that and see that, um, at least on two occasions, uh, it has been determined that we meet those design standards, I think you could, as well. Now, then, then we go to the second step, which is the mandatory criteria, which this board, uh, must find in order to, um, grant a special permit. Again, those criteria set forth in the grant of a special permit under section one oh three. The project can't be substantially, uh, actually, the plan must demonstrate there's not going to be any, um, undue hazard nuisance or congestion based on the plan and design features. Uh, I think that the, the parking plan, the drive-through plan, all address circulation well. I think that we're going to have, um, uh, you know, a safer place than what's there currently, uh, with regard to the tanks that we're having there. The, the living conditions are gonna be better. I don't think you're gonna have any nuisance. I don't think you're gonna have any congestion. In fact, the stacking line, the stacking, um, lane in this case, uh, we need ten. I think that we have ten shown on the plan. I think we could either, also put another four cars, uh, on the site, so it's not in Route twenty-eight, uh, if it got stacked up that bad. The goals, purposes, and objectives of the road district by law will be accomplished. I think we, I've already addressed those. That's a duplication of the prior criteria. C is that the project as a whole substantially accomplishes the purposes of underlying zoning by law. Again, we are talking about a business zone. We are not trying to build this in a residential zone. It's a business zone. We substantially comply with that by law, which is why we need, um, some relief from, um, some of the development, but overall, based on the, the size of this project, I think what we're asking for is very minimal, um, in, in comparison. D is that the, the, uh, the benefits to the neighborhood, district, and town from the road district development approval outweigh the effect of any deviation relief. This is gonna be, uh, one. And I think, you know, there is some opposition to this being built, uh, mostly because of the drive-through and its location, and the perceived, uh, noise, um, and lights, and, um, but again, what we're looking at on the plan is, we've actually moved it further away from the residential zone. We've included a fully compliant buffer to the residential zone. It is not a hundred feet from a residential zone, but the, the nearest house, the nearest lot is forty, I think we said forty-one, forty-two feet. We do have full buffers, if you can see on, uh, on the plan, and, uh, an eight-foot fence that will be along that entire common boundary with the residential zone. We're taking, we're taking steps to make sure that that's not going to be a nuisance, uh, to those people, um, living in the back.
Did I see something? That's like an acoustic fence, or is that just a regular?
It's an acoustic fence. I think that's what was suggested to us at the planning board as a condition, so. And then the last criteria is that the architectural and site designs of the proposed development plan is as previously approved by the planning board. Well, this is the same plan that we brought you. We didn't change anything up, so. Overall, there's a lot of criteria there. It's a big project, as you indicated. There's a lot of things to go through. I, I, I really think that this is a good project. Um, it's good for the town. Um, I think that the benefits do outweigh any negative. I think that the requests that we are, are, are seeking here are, are small in nature compared to the overall project.
So let me ask, is, uh, your presentation that you've just made isn't speaking to just the special permit for setback relief, but to all eight parts of relief?
That's correct.
Because I'm gonna invite somebody, anybody that wants to speak in opposition to it.
That's correct.
Because we had only addressed it as the one, so. You, uh, you go on with your, your
I, I think I'll, I'll stop here and, uh, listen to some comments and
Oh, that is a little quee. John, any questions?
Dietrich.
Before we invite people back. John?
Yes, I do. I'm looking at this large plan here that you have, and, uh, questions, um, how far is it a walk from the resident parking to the entrance to the door that they would go into? Hundred feet?
A hundred feet from the furthest, uh, corner, yeah, to the north.
And that's the primary entrance for the residences, correct? Is that the only entrance for the residences?
No, there's two entrances on, on the building. There's one in the front and one to the left side.
Oh, the other one. The other one would be over in the other corner of the building, right, over near the drive-through and inside there?
For fire protect, for, you need to have two means of egress for the building, yes.
So, who would you be renting these to? Are you suggesting you'd rent these to families? I see you have a playground there.
Yeah, um, two bedrooms, maybe some small families, yeah.
Because I have some concern about them having to cross a crosswalk all the time, and having children play out there when you have what I hope we wouldn't have an argument, it's gonna be a very busy drive-through. Because that's the only one down there. And if we go to the drive-throughs at Dunkin' Donuts and anywhere in the town, there, a mob scene.
It's also been a problem along Route twenty-eight, very specifically.
Yep.
Had there been any consideration to? Well, that's one concern, so, and the parking. You have eight bedrooms, total of eight bedrooms?
Right, four apartments.
Two to a bedroom, correct?
One and a half per unit. That's the parking requirement.
Well, I know, but we, we talk in
Okay.
realistic terms. I don't con, half a person's a real person. So, I mean, I would have to figure that everybody's gonna have their own car, so I think you're kinda light on, what do you have, six parking spaces?
Correct.
For four units?
Yes.
Four two-bedroom units?
Correct.
At the one point five
Yeah, and three quiet.
Criteria, uh, uh, limit.
No, I know the parking demand, but I, I just think realistically, I don't, I don't, I know what the bylaw says, but I mean, I just don't think that's doable. And if it's not, where else? Are you gonna put a restriction on the number of cars that the, um, tenants can have?
Can, yes. I mean, there's, there's no other place to put spaces, and, you know, that's, that's the, the legal calculation of our bylaw.
No, I, I know what it is, but I mean, I think we have to look at it in realistic terms as to how many cars you're gonna have there, because you know, it's kinda like the drive-through. I see you have fourteen in your queue.
Well, we have ten shown.
Ten shown.
We'd probably put another four in, in there, correct?
But if you put another four in the queue, then if I pull in there to try to get fuel, then I have a hard time getting around you.
You could, yes.
Had there been any consideration to cutting down the size of the building and the number of the residential units to maybe three residential units?
Well, we did, we, as I indicated, we did have another plan before this one, and, and the, the building was bigger, I believe, right?
It was smaller, but, uh, the, uh, the number of pumps were, were, uh, more. We had five pumps. It was a different layout. But, we looked at the numbers economically, this is not gonna work if we don't, I mean, we're, I, I've been working with the town for the past two years. Working with the planning department, working with the building commissioner, with the building department, with all the different departments, and what you see here, really, this is, uh, version number five.
And with the zoning board.
Yeah, now we're working with the zoning board, which is, yeah, but, uh, it's version five of the site plan. We've been through so many, uh, tweaks, and, and really, I mean, to make it work, and all the different boards, and
And I would, I would presume that if we didn't allow you to have the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through, that the plan would also be, wouldn't be feasible for you to do.
Is it the Dunkin' Donuts that's going back in there?
Yes.
Yeah, well, they remedied the, the, the problem pretty much down at twenty-eight, uh, further down twenty-eight. I don't know how, but they, they keep people moving along much better than they did before, even at eight AM or eight thirty AM. But anyway, uh, there's no, I don't know how you ever stop that. Put up a sign, no standing, uh, no queue line, uh, access from this point, uh, backward.
Think they were bringing it in off forest and wrapping it around.
Yeah, they cut off, they, they, down at the one at Forest Road, they, they closed the curb cut on twenty-eight. I don't, you obviously couldn't do that here. Well, tho- those are a couple of my concerns that I see. Um, it, it's, it's a nice plan. Obviously, if you cut back one of the units and you cut the building down a little bit, you could move it back further than eleven feet, 'cause, but that juts out towards twenty-eight.
Well, again, w- we did that because on the road, the sighting and building requirements are to move it to the road. We, we had actually headed to the back of the lot.
And regarding your, um, convenience store, because the convenience store is pretty good size. How many parking spaces do you have? You have, what, two? Three, six, seven, eight, nine, ten? You have ten?
Fourteen total.
Fourteen total?
Well, we have twenty-one on the site.
We have twenty-one on the site, but you're including the residential's, correct?
Correct.
Well, let's, let's just talk about the commercial.
Okay.
How many, how many parking spaces do you have for people to walk in and out of the convenience store?
We have, um, looks like seven for the mercantile uses, and four for the coffee shop, because most of it is drive-through.
Yeah, fif- fifteen, actually, yeah.
Yeah, 15 actually, yeah.
As a practical matter, don't most people stay at the, under the canopy at the pump, walk over by the... Are you counting those spots?
No.
No.
Well, can you, I guess, huh?
Yeah.
And you have the loading zone, I noticed, over here by the drive-up?
That was suggested by planning. We actually had it over to the far northeast corner, and they wanted it, yeah, they want...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we had, they had wanted it up. We had it here, and they moved it over here for us. Yeah.
What's that loading for? Is that for the store or is that for the...
Yeah, unload.
Not the gas?
Yeah.
The gas, they come in and just pump into the... How will your tankers come in and out?
We showed the temp in, Mr. Chairman, on the, it's on the site layout.
The gray. Oh, you're talking sheet four again? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so they can just pull right in and out of 28? That's pretty easy, actually. That's all I had right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. Does anybody else have any questions of the petitioner before we move it along to the public input?
I have a couple.
Okay, feel free with Mr., is it Mr. Freyprid that said that or Mr. Martin? Go ahead, Jay, please.
I had a lot of notes, so I apologize. I just had to go through and figure out which ones you answered and which ones you didn't.
Okay.
So the mixed use, you answered the front setback, the parking. It does, all right. I guess one of my concerns is the requirements for special permit. Talks about no hazard, and I'm a little concerned about a residential facility in what equates to a gas station, fumes and things like that. Have you talked to the health department? Did they give you any kind of feedback or do you need to do that?
They were at site plan review. I don't think...
Didn't see anything on site plan, it's just that they deferred.
Yeah, I don't... Have you done...
It's an existing, it's an existing gas station, right?
Gas station now.
But they're adding mixed use residential, so that's my concern.
There's residential around it currently.
But...
You mean closer to it.
And you've got a drive-through right below the windows of the building, and people are going to live there. There's a lot of congestion, so I'm a little concerned about that, that's why I'm going to let you know that. And then there's the noise. You said the back is going to be a fence, but what are the hours of operation that you're planning?
Yeah, I get that. The gas station will be from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and the drive-through from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
6 o'clock makes sense for the coffee getters, obviously. I'm a little concerned about the neighborhood with noise, so noise and fumes are the things that I think I'm worried about the most from this facility and how that might affect neighbors. I think the signs, you answered that question, the signs. With the road, I think that's something that can be overcome, probably. And I was a little concerned about loading, but you think that, how, actually, the stacking and the loading are two things, the other things that I have questions on. The loading, the stacking part that you show for the drive-through, the 10th car, the way you've got it, the way you've got it set up, it prevents anybody from doing that pass-through? They can't get around it if there's 10 cars there?
There is two lanes there. You can get, there's a, there's a route, you mean if you're in line, you want to get out of line?
Or if you're just driving through to get to your parking space in the back.
Yes, yeah, there's sufficient, there's sufficient width.
If you're a resident, you've got to go all the way through. Yeah, I just, the way you show it, you couldn't get a car around there for the 10th. If there was a, 11th car came in and the 10th car is in line...
Oh, you mean from the back of the queue?
Yeah.
Okay.
You wouldn't be able to get around the 10th car, so I'm a little concerned about that from the flow. And then when are the hours, when are you planning on having deliveries done so that loading, are there specific hours of the day?
Delivery could be controlled, yes. It could be somewhere off-peak hours during the day and probably not past 8 o'clock at night or 9 o'clock at night. You're not going to get delivery at 3, 4 o'clock in the morning. We understand the, yeah.
It would be during business hours, is what you're saying.
Yeah, but none off-peak hours, so it won't be 8 o'clock in the morning or 5 o'clock in the afternoon.
Not the 6 to 9 hour when everybody's trying to drive through, so... So I do have a concern about loading, and I just want you to realize that, so... I think those are my concerns. You know, and I'll just have to figure out and listen to what everybody has to say. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, did you have questions?
One question. You mentioned that the lot, the empty lot next door is not buildable, how is, have you determined that?
You mean this one?
Right.
Yeah, I think, actually, I think the billing department made that determination. I'm not sure, is that right? I think they, I think the billing department...
So it was in common ownership or...
I have no idea how that came to be.
It would appear to be buildable to, to me, from what I know, unless there was some kind of common ownership scenario there.
Yeah, that's, unless it's merged, right? I don't, but I don't know that. I didn't do the analysis on that, so...
Yeah, I just like to, you know, in terms of, you know, this has been through design review and the planning board and any number of things, any number of times, and I would just like to say that the petitioner has made a lot of wonderful additions and changes since it started out. The building is attractive. It provides everything that the road was trying to accomplish, and the design is nice and it's mixed use and it's, the canopy over the pumps is nice, everything is done well. Yes, it's, it fits a lot better, especially with the addition of the other parcel of property than it did. It's still a little tight, as Sean mentions, in terms of spaces and so forth, but I think it substantially meets the criteria that's required to provide road assistance along with the notations made by the planning board, if those are all taken into account and done like the private, like the acoustic fence and all the planting. Planting needs to be heavy in the, you know, the residential neighborhood, it needs to be buffered by as much as possible. I think there should also be some sound limitations relevant to how noisy the drive-through menu could be, so as to protect those residents. But overall, I think you've done a very good job of doing what road's trying to do in terms of revitalizing and greening up, and I know you'll green up the state area too there nicely, and the plantings that are expected to go in are good, and I know you're planning irrigation as well. I'd also say, I guess I was the one that said before, a few are red, less maple, a few less red maples and a few more green trees would be nice. But I don't have any other questions anyways.
Can you give me, again, the hours of operation, please?
Yes. Gas station from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Sorry.
Gas station from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Yep.
The drive-through from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
The gas station includes the convenience store, I'm assuming?
And please tell me about the, how one places an order. Are they doing it to a, an order board?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, how is that amplified when you get a response? You say you want a dozen donuts, two jelly, two whole wheat or something?
Right.
And then how does that get reported back to you by the clerk and...
I think there's a speaker there.
And how is it, has anybody considered what the decibel level is going to be there?
Yes.
And how was that considered?
It's 70 decibels, four feet from the speaker, and then as you move, as you move forward, every six, every four feet, it drops to when you double the distance. So I made the computations. At four feet, it's at 70. At eight, it's 64.
Where are those computations?
At 16. I have them here, I can submit to the board, but I can tell you that at 32 feet, it's going to be at 52, not including, then if I include the acoustical fence and the vegetation with the 20-foot buffer, that will drop to 40 decibels.
What's normal conversation?
It's 50. Normal is 50. It's below normal at the property line.
Yeah, we just had to deal with this at another, another local business. So, you've answered that, and all the lighting will be shaded downward?
Down, correct.
And I see you've done the lighting plan. I'm very concerned about how children go from that residential dedicated parking area and playground location. How do they get back to the building with remembering that there's a queue line here where when you get your order filled, you're going to get right out, you're heading right out to 28? Where is, is that crosswork, that cross there?
Yeah, let me, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
You need to be at the mic, though.
Again, we, we're going.
I just need to show you something on the plan, if I may.
You don't have a pointer?
I think it's easier if I...
Go ahead.
Yeah, you are correct. I mean, the parking is, and this was a comment originally designed, combined the parking together, it was a different layout, but I think there was a comment from either site plan review or during the, one of the design review committees to separate, if we can separate the parking for the residents from the general parking. So we thought this was a good spot for the residential because it's not mixed with the commercial. But in order to get to this entrance, you are correct, you have to, there's a crosswalk that clearly delineated on the pavement. There's also signage on both sides that says, "Stop pedestrian crossing." We can add a speed table also to slow the traffic down. And also remember that most of that traffic is stopped at the window, so you're not getting through traffic. Most of that traffic is at the window, and then they need to stop, physically they have to stop, in order to pick up their order then to move, so...
Well, my concern is there's a second lane back there that's going to be traveled by patrons of the convenience store, the gas station, as they go by the queue line. The sidewalk delineation, the crosswalk delineation is right on a corner of the building, and so people don't necessarily see it until they get to that corner and start to make it. Can you put in some kind of warning light as well, whether it's red or yellow, I don't think I really much care, but something that can go there to really alert people that they have to be cautious going through there?
True.
Yeah.
Tell me where the B2 zoning district ends. Is it beyond this property?
No.
Okay, it ends at this property?
In the rear, yeah, in the rear of the property, correct.
I'm always confounded by that, you know? How did they ever draft that up?
Stop where it hits the first residential district.
You know, I'd want to see, if I'm going to vote favorably for it after I hear what everybody else has to say, I would want to see conditions added as to the hours of operation being definitively stated and as well the hours of delivery. You've got a dumpster back there to, close to the residential parking, and those things make incredible noise at 5:00 AM. The Walgreens, I don't know if you know where I live, but the Walgreens, when they dump, I hear it all the way over to my house, which is about a, probably a third to a quarter mile away, somewhere around there, half mile, I don't know. Anyway, that's an annoyance. I would want to see them do that in the, during the low-peak hours of the day, if at all possible, you know? We tell you to do it, they'll do it, right? Not at disposal, do it. All right, now, I had indicated earlier that because you are making this presentation now in whole, as we relate to road, I would re-ask the crowd, if anybody wants to speak in favor of this petition, please come to the microphone and let us know. And seeing then, does anybody care to speak in opposition to this? And let the record indicate that Attorney David Reed has a come. Well, there's one person up here. You want to speak after he does?
You want to speak in favor?
He speaks in favor.
Oh, oh, come right up then. I didn't see you raise your hand or anything, I apologize.
Sorry about that.
Did you raise it? I just didn't see it.
Not quickly enough.
Go ahead.
My name's Lee Boivier. I'm a butler across the street at Riverview Peyton Tackle, and I'm looking forward to this change. I've been there 30 years. It's going to be a great improvement.
Aesthetically, for sure.
Yeah. And I do feel that traffic on the road is going to slow down because of this, you know, and be a little safer in that sense, too.
Well, you know, everybody that comes out and participates in these meetings should be thanked, and so I thank you for coming because this is how government should work, okay?
All right.
Very good, thank you, sir. Does anybody care to speak in opposition to this? And I know Attorney Reed does, and he's now at the lectern.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, on behalf of Nancy and Scott Rayburn of 27 and 28 Briar Lane, the immediately plotting property to the north, which is indicated is improved with a single-family home and is in an R40 zoning district. The district line, as you point out, Mr. Chairman, is the property line between the two properties. I would first beg to differ with one representation made in the application itself as to what the existing conditions are. The application indicates the existing uses are a gas station, a convenience store, and multifamily housing. Multifamily housing is defined in the bylaw as a building or portion thereof containing more than two residential units. There is no multifamily housing there now. There are five cottages from what you might call a cottage colony, but multiple single-family homes is not the same thing as a multifamily use, they're different categories. And that's important in one respect. You are to assess under the road bylaw, or if you were to consider the individual special permit requests, the extent of deviation from what's there, from what's allowed and what's there now. The cottage colony, the cottages, are a grandfathered use. Multifamily housing is not. It would be an entirely new use that departs from the zoning bylaw. Multifamily housing is allowable in the B2 district, but only in a cluster development or planned residential development. It is not allowed in the underlying zoning in a commercial site like this. It would be allowable under the road bylaw as part of a mixed use, but in comparing the road bylaw to the underlying zoning, it is not a use that is allowed in the district in this fashion. As for the eight items...
I'm sorry, would you just repeat what you just said?
Yep. Multifamily housing, which is a building containing more than two units, is not an allowed use at this site in the B2 zone.
Where is that from? Where is that noted?
In 2.5, the use regulations. Multifamily housing, which is A12, I believe...
Okay.
It's only allowed in a cluster or a planned residential development, not in a commercial site under the underlying zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Of the eight items, that Mr. Tardif went through before, and he's correct and you're correct, you're going to have to consider those under road as well, but not as independent special permits as part of your waiver of relief. I suggest that all of those, with the exception of the gas station use, would, if they were independently considered, require a variance, not a special permit. And again, that's significant to you under the road bylaw only to the extent that you are required to consider the extent of deviation from the underlying zoning and whether or not the project itself substantially conforms to the intent and purpose of the underlying zoning. And if seven of those eight would, but for road, require variances, there is a substantial departure and deviation from the underlying zoning purposes and goals. The one that I concede would be only a special permit under any circumstances is the gas station use, that's allowed in the district by special permit. Under the road bylaw, the mandatory criteria that Mr. Tardif has gone through and that the chairman has mentioned, not to, not, for me not to forget to mention it, one of the criteria under 411.6 is that they have received the majority vote of the planning board to approve the project. We discussed earlier this evening that we may have some disagreement about that, but We discussed earlier this evening that we may have some disagreement about that, but I won't belabor the issue. I will simply say that I submitted to you a letter on March sixteenth outlining our reasons for that. I would ask you to make that a part of the record of our presentation this evening, and I won't, I won't repeat it all this evening, we'll have.
Do you want it read into the record?
No, as long as you all have it.
We do, and it's certainly going to be a part of the record.
Thank you.
Retained.
As Mr. Tardif indicated, the next criteria, the general special permit criteria under one oh three point two point two, which you're very familiar with because it's probably the most common section that you have to deal with from night to night. It says that a special permit shall not be granted unless the applicant demonstrates that no undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion will result, and that there will not be any substantial harm to the established or future character of the neighborhood. I'd like to focus on a few features of the project. First and foremost, the drive-through for Dunkin' Donuts, or Dunkin', as they're now trademarked. Section three oh one point eight requires that any outdoor service facility, including menu boards, speakers, et cetera, shall be a minimum of one hundred feet from a residential property or zone. This property proposes to have the menu board, ordering station, the payment station, pickup station, and all the queuing spots. Forty-one feet from the residential property and the residential zone, less than half of what the bylaw requires. There's no provision that I'm aware of that allows you to reduce that other than by variance or under the road bylaw. These people, the people who live next door, and by the way, Mrs. Rayburn grew up in that house, the little yellow house there, and intended to return there for her retirement, will now be looking out their side windows and out their yard, not at trees and quaint little cottages, which aren't in the best condition, by the way. But not at trees and cottages, but at this drive-up facility, drive-through facility. From six AM to eight PM, fourteen hours, sixteen hours a day, seven days a week, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, especially in the summer, when people have their windows open or outside enjoying their yards. They're gonna have this queue of cars coming up forty-one feet from their property, ordering their food, waiting in their cars, idling their cars, pulling up to pick it up, getting it, paying, conversing with the clerk, and then moving on. All of that, less than half of the distance that the bylaw requires, to be at a minimum, separate that use and those activities from residential property. As for the gas station and gas pumps, currently there are two pump stations located in front of the building, covered by a canopy. Those two gas pump stations are approximately a hundred and ten feet from the residential property of my clients. They propose to double the number of gas pumps, and presumably therefore the number of cars using them, and to move them within fifty feet of the residential property. So, twice as many pumps, twice as many cars, half the separation between the pumps and the residential properties. It will be covered by a canopy, which is now proposed to be twenty point five feet tall, taller than the existing building. Underneath of it will be illuminated by LED lights, the entire area under it, all four pumping stations, all cars that are there, lit up by LED lighting. There also are light poles stationed around the rear, which you can see if you carefully look at the plans, that are sixteen feet tall. The closest one is only thirty-seven feet from my client's property. As you've observed yourselves, beyond this drive-through lane, which is grossly nonconforming, there's an additional lane of traffic even closer than that, only twenty-one feet from the rear property line, for vehicles either leaving the gas pumps, or trying to avoid the drive-through, or the residences coming and going, or the BFI or NOSET cleanup truck coming in to get to the dumpsters. All that, only twenty-one feet. We believe that the site also contains some poor design features, particularly as to the residences, most of which you yourselves have already observed. To get to the residential parking in that far northwest corner, you have to go around the gas pumps, behind the store, past the drive-through lane, in order to get to the small area where their six spaces are dedicated. And then to get back to the residential units, cross through the traffic that's leaving its pickup station for having gotten their coffee and whatever, and then walk halfway around the building to get to the only primary entrance to the residences. We suggest that that's not a good design, that is not a good feature, that is not an asset to the community to have that kind of setup, that will jeopardize the welfare of the residents of this very property. The next mandatory criteria is to ask whether the project achieves the goals and purposes of the road district bylaw. It sets forth what's called a high standard of architectural and aesthetic review. Undoubtedly, this building is nicer looking in the abstract from what's there now, but that's not the standard. The standard is whether it will promote the quote innate charm and beauty of the town of Yarmouth, whether it will enhance the ambiance and historic qualities of the town, and whether it will further the character of the town as a seaside village. I suggest that pulling your boat up on a trailer to get gas is not promoting a seaside village character, and that's the only thing that remotely resembles any of those qualities. Now, as was indicated earlier, one of the requirements that you cannot waive is that the residential portion of the property may not exceed fifty percent of the total site. And I note that the site plan review report of September twentieth that you have attached to the petitioner's application, the building department questioned compliance with that calculation, and suggested that the applicant should give you an actual calculation to show how they relied, arrived at the conclusion that they satisfy that. The reason we're particularly concerned about that is because.
What was the date of that site plan review, sir?
September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you.
Comments of the building department. As we look at the plans, there are at least three areas where the second floor extends out, cantilevers out, beyond the limits of the first floor, which suggests to me that the second floor area, which is entirely residential, contains more area than the first floor, which is entirely commercial. I'd be happy to show the applicant and you where I'm referring to, if that would be helpful. May I, Mr. Chairman?
You can present anything you like, so long as you understand I have to keep it. Thank you. Oh, I see what you're saying.
It may not be a great deal of space, but there are clearly, according to the plans, three areas where the second floor is cantilevered out beyond the walls of the first floor. And I'd be interested to see the engineer's calculations of how he arrives at the conclusion that the residential is only forty-nine percent, when it appears to be greater than half.
We're gonna mark this as exhibit one.
Thank you. The third mandatory criteria group is that the proposal substantially achieves the purposes of the underlying zoning district. As we've discussed, multifamily housing in this configuration is not allowed in the business zone. Drive-up in this arrangement is not allowed even remotely by the underlying zoning district. And as the applicant's presentation itself shows you, they need waivers of eight different provisions of the B-two zone in order to build this. I would suggest to you, if one needs eight separate forms of relief from the underlying zoning, that the project is not in substantial compliance with that underlying zoning. The last major category is whether the benefits to the neighborhood and town for granting these waivers outweighs any deterrence. Language actually says in four-one-one point five two D, that the benefits to the neighborhood, district, and town, road district development's approval, outweigh the effects of any deviation or relief from the requirements of the underlying zoning bylaw. The applicant indicates to you that they believe there's an economic benefit to the whole town by adding more employment. And yet, the subject came up preferfully tonight, but also directly at the planning board meeting, that if this Dunkin' Donuts is built, it's a small probability the one on Forest Road will be closed permanently. So, how many jobs are they really creating here rather than just moving from one location to another? As far as the businesses proposed, is the town benefiting by the fact that they're fulfilling some void or some compelling need for these businesses at this location? By my count, there are four other convenience stores within about a mile radius of this site. There are two other gas stations within less than a quarter of a mile of this site. And as we all know, there are three Dunkin' Donuts on Route twenty-eight alone, let alone the one on Station Avenue. So, if this replaces the one on Forest Road, we've got four now, and we're gonna have four after, so where's the benefit? But the second part of that mandatory criteria, and the bylaw is specific that they must meet all of them, is that it also proposes a net benefit to the neighborhood. It is conjunctive, the neighborhood, the district, and the town. The neighbors do not feel that they will be benefited by doubling the number of gas pumps from two to four, nor from moving them twice as close to them as they are now, from a hundred feet to fifty feet. The neighbors don't feel benefited by, instead of being able to look out their window and see cottages and trees, they will now see a twenty-foot canopy covering these gas pumps that'll be illuminated, at least until, what did you say, ten o'clock at night? They do not feel that they will be benefited one bit by adding a Dunkin' Donuts to this site, if that involves having a drive-through, which is only forty-one feet from their property line, where the bylaw mandates it be one hundred feet from their property line. They don't think they will be benefited by the additional travel lane even closer than the drive-through lane. We do not believe that this satisfies any of the requirements of chapter four eleven, section four eleven. And as I said, the mandatory criteria indicates that they must satisfy all five. We believe that there will be nuisance, hazard, and congestion in detriment to the existing neighborhood, that it will not fulfill the true requirements of the road bylaw, but that is being used simply as a vehicle to overdevelop this site. We do not believe that what's proposed fulfills the purposes and intention of the B-two district because there are at least eight things that they don't comply with. And we certainly don't think that this would benefit either the town or the neighborhood, but most particularly the residential neighborhood, if it were to be allowed. And for those reasons, we ask that you deny this application.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Does anyone else care to speak in opposition?
Yep.
Would you tell us who you are and where you live, please?
My name's Scott Rayburn. My wife and I own twenty-eight and twenty-seven Briar Lane. I'm gonna be real quick because she has a lot of stuff, but the first thing is, the drive-through, first of all, they've said, "Oh, put up an acoustic fence." Well, the acoustic fence is not gonna help us with fumes from the drive-through or fumes from the gas pumps. The acoustic, everything that I've read about acoustic fences has to be at least sixty feet away from the noise which it is trying to prevent. There isn't sixty feet there, it's forty feet from the building, and you still have the cars shorter than that. So, an acoustic fence is not gonna help with sound, never mind the fumes. The only other thing is, again, is Mr. Reed is taking care of most of the other things, except to say that if this goes through, you will have destroyed my property, and we will not be able to live there. It will become a dumping ground because we will have to tear down that house, and it will be just an empty lot. We made the lot across the street, we sat down with the building department and said, "Is this a, is this a buildable lot?" He said, "As it stands, yes, it is, if you get a variance for this, that, and the other thing." And we said, "Well, we want to leave this as a green space for our neighbors and for ourselves, and that's why it's not buildable. We made it that way for the privileges of our neighbors to have a garden in there at some point in time, not to be a buffer because, 'Oh, there's an unbuildable lot, so that gives us more buffer space.'" No. You're gonna destroy our property and make it unlivable, and therefore not a benefit. And any tax revenue that you're getting from this is gonna be lost because you're not gonna be able to tax our property. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else care to speak in opposition to this plan, to this permit request?
Hi. I'm Nancy Katton Rayburn, and as has been said, I own the property at twenty-seven and twenty-eight Briar Lane, which abuts this. My parents bought it in nineteen fifty, they moved here at the ages of twenty-three and twenty-six, and died at the age of ninety and ninety-three in Yarmouth. So, I inherited the property. So, we abut this completely, both of our lots, and then fifty feet to the west where this, the third lot jets up. My comments tonight are gonna take into consideration the impacts this will have on our neighborhood, most importantly concerning health, as Mr. Frappery had asked about. How many of you know someone who has been diagnosed with or died from cancer? Now, how many of you would have taken every opportunity possible to have prevented that cancer? When I first saw this plan for J-Mart, I thought of how it would affect my quality of life, what with the light pollution, the smell of gasoline, exhaust from idling cars twenty and thirty feet away, all along my property line, noise from inside and outside those cars, radios, horns, phone conversations, diesel engines from work trucks early in the morning, noise from delivery trucks, a building that's going to be looming large towards us because it's perpendicular and all lit up, and my house sits here, and that's all I'm gonna see. The canopies for the, for the gas pumps are here, and I have a second floor. That's all, we're just gonna be lit up. We will have no peace, ever, on this property. And also, the headlights heading towards us and then taking the turn for the drive-through, right there in the line of the headlights. And it's also going to be the closest drive-through of any residential area in Yarmouth. There are others that are also close, but it's also gonna affect, because we're such a low-profile residence back there, all of our lots are under eight thousand square feet with a couple of exceptions. All of the houses are about eleven hundred, my house is eight hundred and eighty-eight square feet. This is an eight thousand square foot building on an acre that's just going to light up the end of our street. Well, then I thought about the people who'll be living in this building and their quality of life. So, I Googled, "Living above a gas station, living in a building with a drive-through." In doing so, I came upon a sea of articles and studies conducted around the world.
You know, I don't wanna hear about studies off of Google.
Okay, all right. What I learned about.
Ma'am, you did have a representative appear and talk on your behalf, so if there's something new you wanna add.
It is something new, that's what I'm getting to. I found that it was a major health problem to even live near a gas station, and it's because of benzene that comes out of gas pumps, out of the, the gas tanks when they throw off exhaust as you pump, and also from exhaust, from car exhaust. And there are no safe amounts of benzene exposure. This is why mechanics and people who pump gas have high incidences of cancer. So, it's directly linked to lung cancer, non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, chronic lymphoid leukemia, multiple myeloma, acute myeloid leukemia, and childhood leukemia. And it affects children particularly because they're small, they have a low stature, they're down here in, in the greenhouse gases that are caused by the. In the, the greenhouse gases that are caused by the pumps, by the exhaust. And, um, they just take in larger doses. It, it's just because of their small stature. And they've done extensive studies too that have proven that gas stations need to be five hundred feet from residences. And across the country, you just have to Google and look. In states and towns, they are incorporating these, these setbacks because they've found how bad it is for people to be breathing this and being close to it. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency has echoed these concerns.
No, 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 no.
They.
You've got two minutes.
Okay.
And then it's a wrap.
Okay. Well, they, they noted a health risk for schools and said that they shouldn't put gas stations within a thousand feet of schools. We spoke to firefighters who hate these builds. They, they, we talked to a fire lieutenant in, in Hyannis and they can see one like this on a smaller lot with residences above the gas pumps. And they hate it. And they said, there's no law against them. We can't do anything about it. And actually, a gas station just blew up this past fall in, uh, in Ireland and it killed, and they had apartments above and it killed ten people and injured thirty others. And also, I, I found an article about people who actually live above a gas station in Spain. You have to keep the windows closed because the smell of gasoline is intense and the noise is very annoying. And they just said they try to live as well as possible and they've been trying to get rid of the gas station. There's just study after study that this is not healthy for anyone to live in or be in. And children should never live there if that ever came up. They just shouldn't. And I question that there should even be a playground in our buffer zone. And, and, and picnic tables. I, I, I thought that was our buffer zone. And I also question, how do these people who live there get people who come to visit? Do they not allow, are they not allowed to have friends to come and see them? They'll be parking over at the professional building. And also, um, the employee parking, has that been talked about? Where the employees park for this?
Well, apparently they meet the load requirements as determined by the town, so.
And I.
Right? You indicated twenty-one and you've got twenty-one.
We have more.
Seventeen's required. We have twenty-one.
And I wish that someone would visit the location to see how close we really are there. How small our lots are and how this is just, it's a highly intensive use of this property. And if they'd been working on it for two years, I wish someone had come to talk to us. And gotten our input. So I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll say it to the, you and.
I am forty feet away from you.
What?
I am forty feet away from you. I'm talking in a normal voice.
You know what? No. Okay? This isn't a dog and pony show. Okay? So let's move on, sir. Let's move on. You've already had your chance to speak. Do you wish to speak in opposition to this?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Susan Britta. I live in West Yarmouth.
Know you well. How are you?
It's good, thank you. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm also a member of the planning committee, but I'm here tonight strictly as a resident of Yarmouth and I'm not representing the planning committee in, in any capacity. I am a resident that has watched the development since I moved here fifty years ago, or owned a house here for fifty years. The development, uh, or non-development of twenty-eight. Back decades ago when I was a volunteer on the Dick Martin Route twenty-eight Task Force, we tried to, uh, focus on twenty-eight and what was happening on twenty-eight. And I was particularly, um, intrigued with the road bylaw. Because as one member of the planning board said, he was sick of having Yarmouth called Honky Tonk. And this was an opportunity to have us give a little, but get something in return. And I think you mentioned yourself, Mr. Chairman, it's a, it's a balancing act. Are we giving, uh, at least getting as much as what we're giving, maybe a little bit more? And, uh, having watched the debate, having, uh, listened to the presentations, even having listened to my neighbors who don't even live in that neighborhood. The sentiment is we're giving a lot more than we're getting. There is nothing about this project that is Cape Cod in style, in colonial in nature. It does not. This could be, um, a development in Route nine in Natick. It does not do anything for, for the Cape. It doesn't do, it does not meet the fundamental goal of the road bylaw. Which was to improve the whole look of Route twenty-eight. Yes, it looks better than it used to look, but that is not sufficient anymore. With the water project coming down twenty-eight, this is very, all those parcels are very valuable. We have a wonderful opportunity to get some really quality development through Route twenty-eight. And we need to start someplace and I think this is a good place to start. This project does not meet the criteria of, of, at least in my mind, does not meet the criteria of the road, um, bylaw, all the intent. And I would urge you not to improve the permit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else keep, care to speak in opposition? Please come right up. Tell us who you are and where you live.
My name is, uh, Dr. Audrey Pitts-Eyman, Abutter at fifteen Briar Lane. I'm gonna try to keep this succinct because it's been going on for a long time. And what attorney, even though he doesn't represent me, he, I agree with what he said and also with what Susan Britta just said. I think most of the issues with this, a lot of them are predicated on the drive-through.
A what?
Are predicated on the drive-through being included in this plan.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I, I would really like to see this denied. For, instead of going over the reasons, again, for the same reasons that other people have stated. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I said to other, anybody else wanna speak in opposition? Come on right up. Who are you and where do you live?
I'm Shelley Morrison. I live on twenty-three Briar Lane next to the unbuildable lot. But still close enough that this would be my backyard. I enjoy having my, when I'm not working, having my time off in my yard. I do not wanna listen to people ordering. I do wanna hear the, or be near the constant running of the cars. It just seems, and then the hours, it, my, I would not have any, my, my backyard's like my. My go-to zone, you know, like. It's where I find my peace after working all day. And then to come home and have to listen to that, or have people come over and be like, oh, I'm sorry about the noise, you know. I don't, um. I don't think it's safe as far as, uh, all of the neighbors breathing in all that. I don't think it's safe for people to be living above that. And breathing that in all the time. And, um, I understand it does need to be redone, but I don't think we need a Dunkin' Donuts there. You know, I understand the business and they wanna make money. I get that, but I think they're cramming all this stuff into one little spot. Which is gonna be next to us and, um. I think it's just too much. It needs to be like, if it didn't have the, um. The drive-through. And like, I, I don't think children should be living upstairs, then I'd be okay with it, but I'm, that. That's, that's just too much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Alright, okay, please, please let us conduct the meeting, okay? We're listening to everything you have to say back there. So. Let's now close it to public input on the petition, open it up to board discussion, deliberation and a vote at some point. Dick, why don't we, I picked on you last time. John, why don't we start with you?
I do have a concern regarding the parking. The, the residential parking, uh, in anyone crossing, trying to get there. I think. Folks are gonna come flying out of there. I've seen that before. Once they get their coffee and their doughnut, they're gone, you know, and they're, and they're not paying attention either. They get the coffee, they, so I'm concerned about that. I don't know, a speed bump would be appropriate to slow them down. But that's one concern I have. I understand all these folks' issues, but they do abut a business zone, so. I mean, I don't know how you get around that, you know, so. I don't know. Those are just my couple thoughts.
Thank you, John. Sean?
Well. I'm looking at this. I have some concerns about the way that this flows here, primarily with the residential. I, I'm really not comfortable with the layout, the entrance and exit, the kids or tenants having to walk across that driveway. I don't believe they have adequate parking here, like one of the abutters said. How are you gonna have your friends over? There's no place for people to park. There's no place for employees to park. I don't see this as a feasible flow with this drive-up right here. I think we're gonna have cars out on twenty-eight. This kinda reminds me of Cumberland Farms in West Yarmouth when I look at this driveway because I see a lot of congestion in here. I do think, after looking at this plan, they do exceed fifty percent. But that's really, that's another issue for the building department to determine that. I, I just think there's too much going on in this site right here. Uh, I think it could be cut down. But, I mean, to ask the residents to drive in here and drive through the drive-up to come over here. And then come in here. I just don't think it's suitable for a, a, a residential situation here. Uh, so I couldn't support the, uh. The residential aspect of it. The commercial I could. The drive-up, I have a real problem with that. Again, I, I just don't know that that's gonna work. But as this site sits right now, I, I wouldn't be able to support it in its present form. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Jay?
Well, I don't wanna go through everything, but I do have the same concerns about the residents' parking as well as the drive-through and the issues. Noise, maybe not so much, but I, you know, I am concerned about fumes and, and things along those lines. There is a note on the site plan that, uh, the health department was unable to, unable to approve the project. I don't know if that's changed, but as of. The document that you gave us, they hadn't given us anything else, so.
Yeah, I don't know if we ever heard back from them.
They were waiting for you to schedule a meeting, it says, on this, so.
If I did send the plans, at the time of the site plan, Mr. Murphy did not have a large print of the, of the plans. I did send him that stuff after. I never heard him back, but that's not, we're not here for the building permit. I mean, we're not, we weren't there for the Board of Health permit at that time. We still have to file with the Board of Health for, for the, all the permits. I don't think.
I just would have liked, I would have liked to have heard something from the health department in regard to, you know, residential in a, in a gas station area. That's what I would have liked.
I would have liked it too.
Yeah.
Just for what it's. But in general, those things, it is a very congested space in a small area. I mean, it's, it's a nice facility. I think it looks nice. Is it Cape Cod? That's hard for me to say. I haven't been here for thirty years, but, but, uh, it is looking very modern. So I have some of the same concerns. I think everyone has and I question it.
And Mr. Martin?
Yeah, as much as I'd love to see the redevelopment of this site, certainly it needs it. I think everybody, including the neighbors, believe, believe that. Uh, you know, my initial thoughts when this first came before us was it was way too much on, on the site. It didn't fit. There were too many things going on. Uh, the things going on, the site increased, it's less, um, less intense than it was, but it's still intense. And I think as one of the neighbors pointed out, if it didn't have the drive-through or something like that and quite so much encroachment toward the residences in the back. And the potential noise impacts in, you know, that that has, and I, I could see it better. You know, the pumps, the gas smell, all that. I mean, it's a gas station now, but, you know, increasing that and getting the pumps closer to them, I can also see that as an issue. Uh, I mean, I like the fact that it looks nice. I like the fact that it's mixed use. But I'm starting to think that it's probably a little too much happening on that and there's just, uh. Too many things happening too close to, uh, to residences. If it was realigned and redone up so that the drive-through was toward the side and staying toward the business. Areas as opposed to the residential area, um, certainly that would be something that would help. The, uh, I also have the same issues which I hadn't thought of about the pedestrians and getting over to the parking area and the, and the playground. So, um, as much as I'd like to see the redevelopment and like the mixed use and, and I think it's relatively colonial looking. I don't have a problem with the architecture. I think the architecture is actually pretty good. But there are other issues that are, uh, I think are negatively affecting the, especially the residential neighborhoods, uh, a little too much here, so. I'm. As much as I'd like to be positive, I'm getting less so.
Well. You know, I thought about the drive-through and said to myself, why couldn't they just have a Dunkin' Donuts inside or a, bring over another Angelo, DeAngelo sub shop where they. Got people pulling up and they walk in the front door as patrons. Would that be any less, uh, active, uh, activity on the lot? And I don't know. It's all speculative to begin with. We thought that the Cape Mart down the other end of twenty-eight, down by, uh, Giadino's was going to be a, a, a problem and yet. I've never seen a problem there and I go by it quite frequently, so I'm not sure, but. I, I'm not in any way persuaded by the idea that its proximity to a residential neighborhood should therefore not allow this project to go forward. It's in a business district, just like the inflatable park was. And neighbors said, well, we can't listen to the sound of children playing. So, you know, I, I don't know what to say there. The fumes, that's not our purview. But I am very concerned, quite frankly, uh, about, uh, this parking situation. And, and, and the manner in which it's been stuffed in a corner that, that must now come across to get to their residents. I just think that's so, you know, inappropriately considered in, in the plan and with the safety of children that might be there. You put a playground there, that's where the kids wanna go, whether they're coming out of a car or not. You're gonna send a five-year-old across there and let him play in the playground? And, and come back through a, a queue of cars going up and down? Because there are two lanes there. It's not one lane. It is a lane that's, uh, going to be, have people there like, I think it was, uh, Sean that said, might well, uh, come to. Cars coming out into the, Route twenty-eight as the other Dunkin' Donuts has done and which we have experience with along Route twenty-eight. This is a quieter end of Route twenty-eight, but I'm just so struck by the overhangs. I think you oughta correct that in some fashion. The fumes, I'm just not gonna get into that because we're not experts in fumes and the health department should have weighed in. The hours of operation that you suggest. I don't think they're obnoxious. I mean, eight o'clock for a cup of coffee. There you go. Close it at that point. I am concerned that we have nothing in front of us that is, uh, in any way apparently going to tell us the volume of this at its site. I'd like to hear what that volume is, okay? At the site of where the board is going to be. I'd like to see that the presidential parking, uh, be moved. Uh, moved and along with an entrance. And I don't know how you're gonna do it, looking at it. That's not our problem. That's yours if you wish to consider, have us consider it further. And I, you know, I kinda echo everybody else's concerns, except I do believe it. It's appropriate here. It's replacing yet another gas station that's in bad need for replacement. And I don't know, maybe even tanks. Have tanks ever failed there?
I'm sorry?
Have tanks ever failed at this site? Well, okay, then they must have been in there for a long time in the ground and so, you know, that being remedied by new construction would be a blessing too. But you know, we granted, uh. This site, the right to sell used cars in, in previous decision, I think it was, uh, eight to ten or eight cars that we allowed as used cars placed on the lot. And people could come in and look at the used cars and make a deal or not. And so we've expected, I think historically, uh, that, uh, or the board has, that, uh. This site might be developed into something greater than just a gas station. At that point, it would be developed into a used car lot. You know, and now it's into a very. And now it's into a very, I think, well-thought-out and attractive business that fits well into the anticipated improvement of that property in some fashion. I don't know how you make it feasible without, economically feasible, without taking into account any dollar you can get in terms of revenue. And, you know, that's your business decision. I love the fact that there's residences above. That's a goal of this town, and if we looked at the selectmen's goals, annual goals, it's to do something with Route 28. And I think that this beautifies a portion of Route 28. It's not gaudy. It's not inappropriate for the neighborhood of town in terms of its attractiveness. But I can't support it tonight for the reasons I've stated, which are the parking and which are, these overhangs, I think, are a real issue. Don't you? I think they're a real issue and I see by looking at the floor.
What? I'd say it's more than 50%, yeah.
Looking at the floor plan, I can see why you want to do it because you have to bring the bedroom, one of those bedrooms back in really squeezes the bedroom, and I get that, but that's not our problem, you know? And I'm a huge fan of residences over, particularly if they in any way are considered as a potential low-income rental unit, you know? I don't think this requires that, but I think it's a, be a perfect spot to maybe have one unit dedicated to low income. And believe me, low-income rental units are market rental units, okay? It's a reality here on Cape Cod, unfortunately. So that's all I got to say. Do you want us to bring it to a motion and a vote?
Can we just take a quick break so I can talk to my client, please? Thank you.
You can step back. I'm going to call the other thing to the table in case you need a lot of time to talk, okay?
I just need a couple minutes.
Because I'm going to leave after this one.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to take the last one, actually. Oh, you've got to leave the room.
I'm leaving. So I'm leaving after this, so I don't want you to be gone.
Oh, right after this?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And we'll wait. I'm sorry, I thought it was the last petition.
Well, the other one, it is, but the next one we have is just a continuance of, we're going to grant that anyway. It's a continuance of a special permit. They haven't exercised it yet.
Okay, it's a one-year review?
No, it's not a one-year review. It's a.
Two years.
They want to extend the special.
They haven't done the construction yet, okay.
I presume they'll say yes.
Some flooding issue or something?
Do you want to withdraw it?
If we could withdraw without prejudice on all forms of relief tonight?
I have a motion that we.
Say that again?
Yeah, if I could withdraw without prejudice, all the forms of relief we're requesting.
All forms of relief?
Yes.
Somebody want to make a motion? So Mr. Igo has.
And I'll second it.
Withdraw all forms of relief without prejudice.
Sorry, who is the second?
I'll second.
I know you've got it all down in your notes that you take so well, but I like to make my own.
Catches every word we say.
All forms of relief at petitioner's request. Does anybody on our board care to discuss that motion?
No.
None. Let's bring it to a roll call vote, please. Mr. Antoni?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Fryberry?
Aye.
And Mr. Martin?
Aye.
DeYoung is an aye, so that obviously carries, and thank you for coming in. And everybody's patience tonight. I know it's been a long night. And we're going to then therefore watch one of our board members needs to vacate because of a potential conflict. Yes, he hasn't told me the reason, but he thinks he should recuse himself, and so we're going to say good night.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
So the next is, I really ruin names, don't I? The next is Jason Frazier on special permit request 4883. He's the trustee of Platinum Realty Trust, property located at 27 and 29 Commercial Street and 20 and 24 Delivery Road. That is a zoning District B1, no doubt about that. And a request for extension of special permit number 4883 certified by the town clerk on March 29, 2021, causes you to be here. For what reason, sir?
We'd like to, good evening again. We'd like to request an extension for that permit that was granted in 2021, right, I mean, during COVID with some of the prices of construction. The drainage issue in front of that property continues to be a major problem before my client wants to put a lot of money into it. And if you also, you might not know this, but he also purchased a building next door to this at about the same time. It wasn't planned purchase, but it was there, and so he bought it, so he decided to address that. So he'd like to keep this permit going. He still plans on doing this. He just needs a little bit more time. He's asked for another 24 months if the board would grant that.
Does the board need any discussion on this request? I remember sitting on the petition. I remember the basics of the petition. And this is a pretty common thing that we run into for extending it. Anybody? John, you have any concerns?
No.
And how about you, Jay?
Nope.
I certainly don't, and I'm assuming nobody in our audience cares in favor or against this particular petition. Is that correct? Self-correct. And by the way, I want to identify for the record that you are Attorney Paul Todd of Frank.
Oh, I am, yes.
Still am.
Still are. All right, so let's make a motion and take the vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the extension for 24 months.
Second?
I'll second. I'll second.
You like to get your name in print, don't you?
Somebody's got to.
We still have to do it by roll call. John?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. We'll see you in two years.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you're not going to need to be here in two years, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry to the next group that are coming to us, 4984. I apologize. But, you know, business has to go as business goes.
We are the last one.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Wayne Tavarez. I'm a registered landscape architect, construction supervisor, professional wetland scientist. I've been with Alexander Nemanov, who's the owner. He's with me tonight. And on Zoom, we should have Linda Cronin, who's the engineer who got the Title V approved. This project was brought up, and we apologized twice before. Once, when it was approved, it was found that it was in the historic area. So the first postponement was because we had to get historic approval first. We did. The second one, with Mr. Nemanov's approval, I had told him on the second meeting that this is a pretty professional board and we should postpone the hearing. And Mr. Nemanov went, and at least he purged the needs of the board before you. So we improved the plan. There was a number of questions from the original meeting, the access to the lot. We did show this new plan, this two surveys. There was two surveyors on this board, both of them from Marston's Mills. And one of them did a survey for conservation. So I got the conservation approval back in the summer. Linda, who's with us again on Zoom, is a professional engineer, and used the same plan to get a Title V approval in the fall of last year, '22. And then the plan was used again when we found out we had to go to Historic Commission. But of course, that's mainly architecture. So we're here now asking for the relief of the, can you hear me okay? The relief of the zoning setbacks, which, the house was built in 1945. The subdivision was built in 1947 or approved in 1947. So we went through a sequence of historical events, so I'll try to do it as quick as possible because we're all tired and we all want to go home. Is, we have the assessor's map, which shows this as a town-owned property, I mean, a town road. The original plan and the subdivision, 1947. Most importantly, we have improved the plan. As you can see, this is at 10 scale here. The plan you have in front of you is at 20 scale. That's the usual size that the surveyors used. And we did put the full Buttercup Lane public 40-foot way so that you know that we have access to the lot. So that was one of the questions that was raised in the last issue, access to the lot. I think we've solved that. We have adequate frontage on Buttercup Lane. The septic system cloud, we had a cloud on one of Mr. McDougall's plan, previous plan. And what it did, it showed exactly where the existing cesspool is. That's a 1945 cesspool. It's a block cesspool. We know that we've gone through at least five renditions of septic upgrades since then, and we're currently with a Title V system. So we just showed where the old cesspool was. Linda shows it on her plan. So that's what the cloud was that was brought up in the last meeting. Section, if I'm talking too fast, slow me down. We have a first floor plan, so we show accurately all the measurements of the house and we reiterated it on the lot. So we also have superimposed the new house over the old house so that we can compare. I think this is a fair comparison of setbacks and so forth. The improvements are many. Before I get into that, the height of the building was calculated by Alexander's architect at 30 foot, four inches above. Is that shown on any plan? Yes, it's on.
Because I've got one here, an elevation, and it doesn't give me any height.
Oh, it doesn't?
On the house plan here, on the elevations.
Now, you see it? You have it?
Yeah, I see it here.
Sir, if you don't have one, I'll give you.
I don't have any elevations on it. Is it the newer plan?
Do you want to share or do you want to?
Can I keep this? All right, thanks.
Alexander's architect showed it as 30 feet, four above the foundation. And then what I did is I did a floor-by-floor analysis of the elevation of each floor, the top of the height. I'm sorry, I did give away the plan I needed. I think it's 48.6. The roof is 48.6. We talked to the building inspector and he gave us the criteria and the page number of how to calculate height. So when we did that, you take the average of the contours in the front of the house, which we did, and it was, I believe, 15.9. So you got 48.6, 15.9. You got approximately 32 feet to 32 feet, seven inches, I think. I'm doing this by memory. So it's a 32 foot, seven inches, and that's what you're looking at from the street. So that's well below the 35 feet. So it was a good question you asked at the last meeting about the height. I think we've answered that, that question, unless you, unless you have a comment. So we've got a new plan. We show the access. We show the height of the building. The zoning map, we apologize for the zoning map. I collaborate with my surveyor, surveyors. I have three surveyors that I work with, and in this case, it was Mr. Rick Hood. We're talking about the zoning map. We looked at it, and I included the zoning map in with your information because it shows R25 in bright yellow and it shows R40 in beige. And as we're talking over the phone, I looked at the block in there and I says it's yellow, so that's R25. So we apologize for the mistake we made at that last meeting calling this R25. It's been corrected on the plan with the current setbacks the way they are. Also, this has been improved in five big ways. The old house is only 14.3 feet from the sideline. It didn't even conform to the 15-foot setback that it was allowed back in 1947. So we've improved that to 19.5 feet to the main body of the house, okay? We also have a soffit that was designed when Mr. Nemanov went before the Historic Commission. There was a soffit that was a one-foot overhang. We were concerned that that would be in the building envelope. And the building inspector has issued chapter and verse, which I'm trying to find here. Oh, yeah, Table 203.5, that it's an exclusion for soffits and overhangs. So we eliminated that as well. And then on the front entry, Mr. Nemanov wants a cover to cover his main entry. And that overhang stops one-half foot short of the setback. As you see, 15 and a half feet, if you can see it on the front. So it just makes the overhang, that's the last structure towards the street. Then there's two steps that come down from the platform. They are excluded on section 203 point. Again, that's the building inspector.
I think we're familiar with it.
Yeah, okay. 203.4.2. So that's eliminated as well. So the other improvements that were done here, the distance of the setback is now 19 and a half feet. The septic system, of course, is vastly improved. It's in a better location. It's Title V upgrade. It's squeezed into the corner, and as Linda would attest to, if you have any questions, Linda's on Zoom, and she squeezed this in with appropriate waivers.
Did you, did you want anything from Ms. Cronin?
Uh, no.
Okay, and it.
Linda, if you want to stay with us, I guess we're being relieved.
In case there's any questions.
You have no questions?
No, no, no. It's just if she wanted to add to your presentation.
I misunderstood. Linda, do you have anything you want to add?
I do not. I think you've covered it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Septic system was upgraded, and the distance of the back of the lot was improved greatly with conservation, and we did go back and forth with conservation. I should mention that Mr. Nemanov's family, there's six people, four children, and his wife, including Mr. Alexander, I mean, Alexander, is six people. So he was trying to get as big a house as he could on this lot. As you'll notice, the existing coverage is 8.9%. Proposed coverage, 14.3, well below the 25% that's used for this. But getting back to the setback, the old house was only 27 and a half feet from a coastal bank. Back in 1945, that wasn't even recognized. Today, they recognize it with a very hard line. And conservation pushed this back to 35.7 feet, vast improvement, eight feet back from the coastal bank. So we're squeezing this house in. I hope you people appreciate the lengths that Mr. Nemanov has gone to to do this. Then, in order to put the septic system in, we couldn't show the septic system on this plan because it would just be confusing. It is on Linda's plan, and it's shown to the lower right-hand side, right underneath the electric line that comes from the up pole and at the tip of the existing gravel driveway. That's where that septic system resides. So the house consequently had to be pushed over and juxtaposed on this site to the left-hand side. So we pushed it over as far as we could, and so the foundation is 10 and a half feet, not 10 feet, but 10 and a half feet from the setback, the old setback line that was allowed in 1947. Almost done here. Let's see, distance, there's a vast, oh, and of course, with conservation, they asked for mitigation. So you have the conservation plan that was approved back in the summer, and it's quite a bit of vegetation that's on there. I can't remember the square footage, but it had to approach 600 or 800 square feet of new vegetation along the side setback that we're talking about on the east side, where the 10 and a half foot resides. Up on the top of the coastal bank, that's where conservation wants to see this. And then down the coastal bank also, there's a weak spot there where there's a bunch of locust trees. I'm very familiar with this site. I had to flag the whole site, trees, BVW, et cetera. And that area, too, has been reinforced with a shrub layer of vegetation. So that being said, oh, and the last thing, you don't see it on this plan. We did not want to junk up the plan, but on conservation's plan, you'll see downspouts. So in addition to that, we're taking care of roof runoff. We're recharging the groundwater that's in there. It's a conservation issue, not a zoning board of appeals. But we're trying to show you that this house is a tremendous upgrade from what you had seen before. So we'd appreciate any questions you have. We'd like to answer, and we'd appreciate a positive vote on accepting this grandfathered setbacks for this particular house from Mr. Nemennov. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions to our petitioner?
On the plan, I don't understand why it has, talks about fifteen-foot front yard setback, has the dash line and ten-foot side yard setback, because those wouldn't be the appropriate setbacks for the zone. Is that just a mistake, or?
I'm sorry, say that. That was the old setbacks.
In back in nineteen forty-seven?
Back in nineteen forty-seven. We're asking for relief, that's why we're here, we're asking for relief.
Well, I don't think those apply under reason of the place. They don't, the only setbacks that would apply, I mean, yes, you can ask for order of relief based on what was already there, but what applies today is your, your front yard setback should be thirty feet, and your side yard setback in this district should be twenty feet.
Yes, yes. But I listened to enough meetings where you have allowed the grandfathering of-
I'm not, I'm not saying we haven't, but I don't know if that should be shown on the plan, because I don't see what relevance-
Change the plan if you'd like to.
That has anything, okay.
We can change it and put the, put the existing ones on. We're trying to show the old ones, so that you can see.
I don't see any second-floor plan here, too. Do we have that?
Uh, you don't have the second-floor plan, I don't believe, no.
What other, five bedrooms total, you said?
No, three bedrooms.
Oh, three bedrooms. So there's two bedrooms upstairs.
Yeah. That's all the Title V would allow, and that's all.
I was going to say, I was wondering, yeah. All right. And the, just from a viewpoint, the historic district said, okay, there's no windows on either side of the house?
Yes, yes. They accept.
We're okay with that? Are you okay with that? I think it looks awfully funny, but that's another story, I guess. And, you know, overall, we're pushing it back further from the water, which is good. We're pushing it, not overall, but at least a corner of, back from the street, which is okay and good. One side, we're actually getting quite a bit closer to the lot line. I know that lot on your, on the westerly side is very large anyway, so it's not like you're encroaching too much on another house there. But, you know, I hate to see any situation where we encroach even further with a brand-new build on a house like this. On the other hand, I could probably be convinced otherwise, but I don't understand the whole height thing. Am I, I guess I'm in crazy, but I don't, you know, why do we talk about roof line at forty-eight point six? And then-
No, no, no. Oh, no, 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 you can't do what you're doing. Back at the mic, please.
Okay. I don't have a plan there.
Sure, sure.
Of ground grade, is it?
Sorry, but people at home are waiting to hear every word you say. Now, where's the plan go?
Okay. I guess I get it, okay. So thirty point four feet is really your foundation level to the top of your-
Guys, please, and the microphones, please. Okay, I just said that.
I just, it's confusing why the plan's showing roof line at forty-eight and then the height at thirty, thirty point four.
We just were, we were redundant. We showed the height and absolute value, which is the thirty foot. That's the right-hand side. On the left-hand side, we showed it in relative to the contours. So somebody could do the math and say forty-eight point six less fifteen point nine, which is grade level, is the same-
Okay, I think, I think I get it. I don't, sorry, the reasoning, but, okay.
You're done.
Yeah. You know, once again, big house, small lot. And looking for quite a bit of relief, but I guess we've done it before.
Mr. Freyberg.
I went over everything. I can, I can see the height. That was one of the questions we had last time. I see the gravel driveway from Buttercup. It's clear now that that's all town, that's all street.
Yes, that's frontage, yes.
I guess the only thing, it's a, it's a nice house, but it is large for the lot, and I'm concerned that it's closer on the, on the left side, or I'm not sure, east-west side that is.
West side.
On the west side, it's closer to the property line than the other one. So we usually don't like to go to make things more non-conforming than they were. So that's the one issue I would have, I think, right now, from what I'm seeing. Other than that, it's a nice looking house.
May I respond? I'm sorry.
Other than that, it's a nice-looking house. I understand what you're trying to do, and it seems to be within regs, except for that one item.
Mr. Antoni.
I just, can you clear up the access to the lot? Are you saying you own right up to Buttercup Lane? Is that, or is there, there are no easements? How are you accessing the lot? I'm still-
Okay, there's a road that passes in front. Buttercup Lane passes in front. So the frontage that shows, see frontage on the, on the plan, right along the front of the lot? And it says north six, eighty-five degrees, whatever it says, eighty-two point two feet. You have eighty-two point two oh feet of frontage along Buttercup Lane.
Okay, so Buttercup actually does, it comes right up to the lot?
Comes right up, yes. The old plan did not show that.
Right, right, right. Okay. That clears that up. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yeah, explain that one to me again. I'm looking at the layer, what I'm looking at is a site plan by Richard J. Hood. And it shows me, oh, that's from the coastal bank. Okay. But you're saying that, that, where's the compass?
Compass on the left-hand side. The north arrow, you mean?
Oh, here, yeah. Gets his arrow right there.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I guess it would be southwest-ally would be the, the property line that is shown on this plan to be that of your, your client. Is that, in fact, their property line? And where do they get title to the balance between that and the road layout of Buttercup? Because the running description doesn't seem to include that.
There was a deed that was attached showing Buttercup Lane. We showed the old subdivision from nineteen forty-seven, which shows exactly this description. And the building inspector, so you know, he did stop at the office he had, but coincidentally, he was there when I dropped this off. And the first thing he went to look for was, ah, Buttercup Lane, he said, public forty-foot way. You, that's what we need. So he says, that's the end of the road. Buttercup Lane ends at this lot, and it provides that lot with the necessary frontage. So there's, that's the access.
I'm fine with all that, but you're showing a property line that is not up to Buttercup Lane. Is that the actual property line?
Actually, I, I just think I figured out the hundred-foot from coastal bank line is a line that looks like it's part of the street line or something.
Oh, I see. I apologize. The curved line?
That looks like a, a road line or whatever, but where it says frontage and so forth, that's the frontage, and that is actually the road frontage.
That's right. There, there you go. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, that hundred-foot from a coastal bank is a line that should be dashed, because we have to show that for conservation, and we wanted to reiterate it for zoning board. So we're not hiding anything. We have a hundred-foot repair, inner riparian zone we have to show for the Rivers Act that came in here. It hits the up pole where the electric line is.
You're not answering my question.
Okay.
I just would like to get my question answered, quite simply.
Sure.
I'm seeing a lot line here that runs, you have a site plan with you, do you? Okay, I'm seeing a lot line just below septic. Do you see the line I'm talking about?
Yes.
How is title from the remaining property out to Buttercup? Where does title to your petitioner come in?
Okay, let's point to this one. You're talking this line right here. This is the same plan. It's just blown, right here, that line.
Yeah.
Right, that's the frontage, and the edge-
That's the edge of Buttercup Lane.
No, it's not. Not as shown on this site plan. Absolutely not.
Curved line is not a lot line. That's, that's a hundred-foot line.
I understand, but Buttercup Lane is down here.
Yeah, but that includes the area north of that line. I think it's, it's, it is confusing. It took me a while.
Very confusing, yeah.
But Buttercup, that's all Buttercup Lane.
Yeah. I drove out there, the Buttercup Lane right there is almost like a single lane.
This is just the coastal bank line.
I think the whole road is forty feet wide.
Well, Buttercup Lane is shown right here. Is that the full layout or not?
That's the full layout, yes.
No, no, no.
Within the, within these checkered lines.
It's not.
Actually, there's, you're, actually, you're missing something on that plan. This one shows that line, too.
Can I demonstrate it up on this?
Okay, so, so then I'm asking, it just leads up to the next question. It's not anything that valuable. You've got a gravel drive that would seem to go over the Buttercup Lane layout. And I don't even see where you can put two cars on that property from there.
You can't.
You can't, right?
No.
So where is the one point five cars that are going to park on this lot?
It's shown on the conservation plan. We didn't want to muck up this plan with driveway. There is a driveway that shows on the-
Well, you can see it, gravel drive.
No, 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 that's the existing gravel drive. We didn't want to, do we need to show you the proposed driveway?
Want to see where one point five cars are located, that's all.
It would be on the conservation plan, which you do have in your package. Sorry.
Because I don't want to see them on, in a road layout. That, that's my only question. Frankly, I don't care, because I don't think that road's ever going to get built. But here I'm looking at, I guess this is what you're referring to, is the conservation plan? Is that this?
Yes, there you go.
So as I look at it, you know, your plant schedule's here and everything. That's all great and wonderful.
It's in the-
But they lay, have the layout for the gravel drive. And I'm trying to be a stickler about this. I just want to know where on the lot does it go? Because if you go onto the lot, you wouldn't be able to use that gravel drive. You'd have to come in from some other location, because of the distribution box and the, and the septic system.
No, you can drive over the septic system, H-twenty system. So you, you carry the load.
Without it being paved?
Without it being paved, yeah.
Okay.
If it's an H-two loading over.
Yeah, H-two, H-twenty.
And why is it you have to, you can't just move it over a little bit to the?
It's at an awkward angle. I mean, it's ugly. I'm a landscape architect. We try to do things correct. That's two-car parking, not one and a half. That's two-car parking, strictly.
I'm not talking about parking now. I'm talking about why is it we can't correct the nonconformity where it's, your proposed nonconformity where it's ten point one, I think. Yeah, ten point, why are we going from nineteen feet to ten point five?
Okay, on that side, as I mentioned, because of the separation of the septic system. The septic system doesn't show on this plan, but you do have a copy of the approved Title V plan. The septic system is under the driveway on that south corner. The up pole, where the gravel driveway is, that's where the septic system is. So because of that, you have to juxtapose the house as far away as you can. The only way we could do that was to slide it to the left.
Those are two separate, very separate issues. I don't care about what the board of health tells you or anything else. So long as they're not telling us we shouldn't act on it. I've got that plan, thank you.
That's yours.
Oh, did you take it from me?
Yeah, we don't have it. We don't have it.
Yeah, sure. I mean, you know, this is the zoning board, right? And we have to justify anything that deviates from the zoning requirements. And this is a lovely, lovely home. And I don't want to see it be smaller. It's fine. If this is what its family would like to have, that's great. But why? Give me a justification, other than it's convenient and it's architecturally more pretty, that we can't move this house over.
To the right?
Yeah.
Because you're putting it on top-
Right, you know.
To the, yes, you're saying to where it is, from, from where it is now, is because you're trying to separate septic, and you have to include septic here, because there's a septic vault that has to go into this house. And underneath this foundation, he has to stay twenty feet away. So the point is, you're trying to keep it separate, and you're imposing on a lot that, as you said, the house is so far away. That's a huge lot, which is land-corded, and it's huge. So we pushed it over because we thought it was, yes, it's a little bit less conforming, but it makes sense.
I'm familiar with the locale. And wait a minute, we all can't talk. And I'm just asking a simple question. Why does it have to be moved closer to that lot line? You have, you have-
To provide room for the septic, probably, right?
No, well, the septic is out front.
Excuse me, could I add something? Yeah, on this point.
This is where Linda could, Linda, you still with us?
She is not.
Oh. Also, except the septic system, some issue with septic system, I would like to have some space on the right side between the neighbors to park the car and maybe to put some stuff for kids, like a playground and so on, because we, I have four kids, and it's a pretty small lot. And to have some extra space to spend the time with family on the summer or other part, it will help us to make more space for some stuff, family stuff.
Yeah, you know, and I understand that people like to do things the way they would like to see it on a lot, particularly a small lot like this. Beautiful lot, though. Beautiful place. And what I'm not understanding, though, is it's not, it moved to the right, we'll call it, from this plan, right, from the site plan.
It enlarged it to the right.
Looking at it from Buttercup Lane. Moving the house to the right, so that there's no new nonconform, no, so that there's no greater nonconformity. That, i- it, is it anything other than the aesthetics, the architectural aesthetic?
No, there's many, many reasons. I mentioned the septic. We cannot ignore the septic. You have to separate-
You'll still be twenty feet away from the septic.
No, you won't.
Move it to the right?
The septic encroaches on the foundation of this house. He's losing half of the foundation of this house, because he has to be twenty feet away. You don't see the septic here, but you see it on the septic-
I see it on the, on the plan that you gave me.
Well, you could find it on a septic plan from engineer. Would show some, like a, like a slab around twenty feet from the septic, from the septic system. You could, you could not build like a foundation.
Is this where the septic system is going to be located, as shown on this plan that you gave to conservation?
I can't see it from here. Can I take a look?
You can take it, go back to the table and talk with your client about it. Have to keep you on mic, sir. I'm not trying to be difficult. Got to keep you on mic.
And the landscape line, too.
Yes, and-
Proposed septic system.
Yeah, and, and there you could see like a twenty feet away from the septic system on the left side and on the front.
Sure, but that's only showing us a portion of the lot, right? It's not showing us the-
It's showing the whole lot.
Side of the lot. And it looks to me like you can move it over there, and-
I'm sorry, I, I know what's the problem. I know what's the problem.
Okay.
On this plan, what was, what was like approved from conservation, this is not like proposed, what you have there.
Different?
Yeah, it's a different, it's a different footprint. That's why you couldn't see it.
I need that one back if I could. Thank you so much. All right, I'm thoroughly confused, but if-
This one is not accurate anymore, is what you're saying?
No, because this was a throwaway plan. This is the first attempt to conservation.
So the septic system is fitting in that little fifteen-foot area in the front?
It is.
Twenty feet.
You shouldn't have the septic plan.
I don't, I don't, yeah, we don't.
The latest files. We have the latest files. The chair has the property folder, which has all the files.
Did you want to say it, Dick?
Look at it again.
Yes, may I address this?
Yeah, no, I'm just picking up on a thread that you did in your presentation, which was, this location was the desired location because of the aesthetic appeal, the architectural. I didn't hear you right when you said that?
No, I never said that, no, never, it was not an arbitrary point, no.
Let's play the tape back. All right, in any event, I don't know, if the other board members don't mind increasing a nonconformity, then I will go along with it. Because I think it's a very tasteful home, I think it's going to be a nice addition to the neighborhood. It's not going to cause any undue hazard nuisance or congestion, unless you're putting 16-year-olds in the house.
In the previous meeting, one of the neighbors was happy to see new houses in this place to compare, because the existing looks so awful.
You know, our building inspector is here now, Mr. Grills, would you come to the microphone, please, sir?
That'll teach him.
I always like to think about the bylaws when we're in the zoning board, you know? Apparently, we're not thinking about them here, but.
How are you? Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mark Grills, here with the building commissioner.
Thank you. Go right ahead. Tell us what you want to tell us about this, you've been here all night waiting.
I didn't want to say anything, I was just here witnessing. Is there any questions, I'm happy to answer.
What?
I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, I have a question, why can't the house be moved over?
Well, that's one I can't answer, I'm not an engineer, so.
Well, you want to come up and see the plan, I mean, you tell me what helps you to address this issue. What, it's going from 19.1 feet to the sideline, down to 10.5. If I'm off inches, I apologize, but that's my memory of it. And I want to know why it can't be moved, if I'm looking at it from, from the, what is it, Blueberry, Buttercup, rather, Lane, why can't it be moved to the right?
I have no idea, that'd be an engineering question. Although, if you look at the coastal bank, the coastal bank, I mean, I'm just trying to answer, just guessing, but the coastal bank appears to get closer to the building, and if you move the building closer to the right, does that make the building closer to the coastal bank? Would be just a question I have, but this is a special permit to raise and replace a preexisting nonconforming structure. So are they making it better than what's there now? I don't, I'm not very familiar with this project. Yeah.
This board has been consistent when considering nonconforming structures.
Sure.
That we don't like to see a nonconformity advanced, okay? We want to see it at least reduced. So, and I'm just not seeing it, I'm wondering why I can't see it, but. Look, and I'm going to shut up, okay, because I think the other board members are probably not in agreement with me, so.
Can I?
Anybody want to, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Uh, no, sir.
No?
No, sir.
You stayed here all this time.
I'm being educated.
I just want the board of selectmen to know how committed you are to this board and being here when we need you.
I just love watching you do your work, sir.
I will say I have the same concern.
Yeah, okay.
As far as the setback goes.
Oh, okay. Well, let's start with somebody, okay? There is nobody in our audience beyond those people that are the petitioners, the petitioners representative and the building commissioner, inspector. So at this point, we're going to now just close it off, the public input, open it up to board discussion and deliberations, and, Jake, you start.
I think it's a, it's a nice house, it'll be a nice addition to the neighborhood, but the concern is it's too close down the west side. I guess it is, from the property line, so we have, we have a pretty much, we pretty much avoid trying to make something more nonconforming than it might be today. So that's a concern. I'm not sure how you can rectify it, if you can move the house over a few feet to get even to where you were, so it's not any worse than it was, that would be preferable. Go ahead.
Could I add something? In my mind, I'm not a professional, I just like to try to make a nice place for me and for my family. If you're looking like for existing, it looks like a same line from the deck and upper line, it goes like a pretty straightforward on down to propose house. And in this case, this is a last lot on this street, on the left side, we have just some wood, we don't have any neighbors, a lot of trees and bunches.
I know, but we go off property lines, that's what we measure from. I'm just stating my concern, that's my concern, so, I don't know.
That's it.
Mr. Martin?
May I address one issue, too? On that, a last thing is a contour, you're pushing it downhill, that contour goes down to 14 feet. So contour is also an issue of the zoning board when you look at topography. So on the right-hand side, it's 17 feet, on the left-hand side, it's 14. So you're actually pushing it sort of downhill and out.
Actually, we're pushing the other way.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is that you're helping. Yeah, you're helping the topography in the sense that you're planting that area as well with conservation. So we thought it worked, that you level off that whole front yard, and that you.
It may work from what you're trying to do, and that, from that perspective, it doesn't work for our zoning bylaw. That's what we've got an issue with. So that's my concern.
Dick? Your comments?
Well, I've pretty much the same, of course, you start moving it the other way and you're, then that becomes not encroaching as soon as you get less than the 20 feet on that side. But, you know, there's more room there, probably should be pushed over that side a little bit more. I do agree, the property to the left is, is large and subject to acre zoning, and it probably has more, less effect on anything that could potentially happen there in the future, as far as that goes. I mean, I don't know how you're fitting this great big house on this little lot with only 15 feet front yard setback and squeezing the septic in there to begin with, but I guess you are. So I guess I can live with it, I'd prefer it be pushed over to the east a few more feet, just like my counterparts here, but, I can see why you'd like a little extra space there for one thing or another, including driveway. So I guess I can live with it.
And John, any questions?
Well, I mean, we're talking, you know, feet, small feet. If we went to the right, you know, looking at the front of the house, what, 3.8 feet to the right? Then we'd be, you know, at 20 feet on the right sideline, but that would only give us 14 feet still, you know, is that better?
He's putting a very big house on a lot, small footprint of a.
You could do that, I suppose, or maybe you can't.
May I address, may I address that issue, too? There's one thing that didn't come up that I just thought about, is that as you push this to the right, you see the number 35.7? You're going to be pushing the house back into the coastal bank setback, which conservation doesn't want.
That's a pretty good argument, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to put my two cents in, okay? I do not like in any way increasing nonconformity. To your left is a man that we all know is a developer. And I don't know why you couldn't seek a subdivision plan of his very large acreage there, and maybe build more houses that would be close to this property line that bucks your clients. And so, I mean, I don't know what the future's going to bring out there. What I do know is that we have a very large house going on a very narrow lot. And that, you know, the problem of even needing to be here is self-imposed. We're not, we're not doing anything that says, gee, you know, we want it this way for our aesthetics, we don't care about the aesthetics. We care about the fact that we are charged with enforcing the zoning bylaws. And, you know, I just don't know what to tell you. Can I live with it? I've heard other people say they can live with it, if they can live with it, I'll live with it. So, you know, you might want to have us go to a vote, I don't, I don't know, it's up to you on how you proceed, but, I mean, I'll tell you, if everybody else goes along, I'll go along, because I do believe this is going to be an isolated house out here, far different than other properties we've seen that we've been very concerned about, when you have a neighbor that has an existing house right near the property line, and now you want to move it closer to them. That's usually where we see these things, so.
One question, bearing, bearing in mind that we talk about a large house, but it's only taking up 14% of the coverage. So it's large, but it's not that large. That's number one, and number two, may we poll the members for how they feel before we go that way?
I think we just did that, but sure, you can ask for a poll.
What is the square footage of this? Is that?
Well, is it?
1443 square feet.
Yeah, the footprint, we increased the footprint around like just 14% from the existing footprint. And like, first of all, when we represent to conservation, first plan for the house, it was bigger, and we.
Shrunk it.
Flowed it up. Yeah, 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 much.
Your total square footage is only 1400.
1443.
But it's a two-story house, so it's 2,800 feet, right?
That's the first floor.
1300, yes, the.
We'd like to get the full square footage of habitable space.
Habitable space is 1355, you got 1355 of foundation, that's it. We had to add on the 88 square feet.
Two floors?
Yeah, you got two floors.
We double what's the first floor?
Yes, but I'm talking about the attachment to the ground, I think, is what you're interested in.
It'll be around 2,400.
I was asking, total square.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, so it's been asked if we, if the petitioner has asked if the board would be polled. Dick, what are your thoughts, are you going to vote for it or not?
Can I go last?
Okay. Well, I'm just going to throw out there that I will go for it if three other board members do, okay? Because I get all you're telling me, but, I mean, I think it's a hard way to get to an end result, to listen to what's been presented to us tonight.
My wife is the whole, whole board.
All right, and we're not inviting anybody else into the fray, okay?
And maybe some of our kids, too.
I'll just be honest, I was, I was, I was going to vote against it, because it's, it's a, it's a greater nonconformity. So you can take that for what it's worth.
Okay, so you're going to lose the vote?
You have to get all four of them to vote for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, sorry, my English isn't so good, for what reason, could you repeat, please?
Nonconformity has increased because you're getting closer to the side setback.
Yeah, I'd love to say build it, because it's a nice house.
I would, too.
But I just don't know why we're increasing nonconformity when there's a remedy for it. Now, if you came back and said CONCOM won't allow it to be moved from that spot, you know, you've got a letter from them that says that, then maybe I'll rethink my position.
Can we come to an agreement, when I push, if we push this house to the right-hand side, and we push it into the conservation area, can we use that as a latitude, as the furthest we can push it? We cannot match, by the way, it was brought up that the distance is not as great as you think to the right, but if we push it, we're going to push it into conservation land, so it's about three feet. If we push it three feet, can we come back to you and say, it's still nonconforming, that's the problem, or less conforming? We're making an attempt.
Yeah, for any way, it will be nonconforming in my mind, correct me if I mistake.
As I mentioned, we should not be approving anything that's greater nonconformity than it is today.
For a brand-new bill, you know?
And variance is what really is required here, so that has a high bar for approval. I'd like to say yes, because I like the house, I think it's nice, it'll improve the neighborhood, but it doesn't go by our bylaw. And we're supposed to be working on the, off the bylaw. So the number that you're looking at, if I look at the old house, oh, now where'd it go? Is that 16.7, is that what that's saying?
19.1.
Yeah, 19.1 before, and now it's 10.0.
Do you go by the house or the deck?
Yeah, you got to go by the deck, and that hasn't been called out.
So I think it's probably around 17 feet. That's, that's kind of what I'm looking at, there's a 16.7, it looks like it doesn't come quite to the corner of the deck. So that's the, that's right now what the current setback is.
I apologize, we lost our Board of Health person, and I know it's not a Board of Health issue, I've been told that by the chairman, but you're pushing the whole house towards the septic setback, which is 20 feet off of the septic.
I'm just telling you what our bylaw says.
I mean, I think a lot of the problem is it's just too big a house. You know, there's a lot of people, you know, a lot of capes that are built and they're 40, 45 feet. This is 52 foot long, this house, and it's a long house for an 85-foot frontage lot.
Yeah, it looks like the no-build zone is merely the 35 feet from the coastal bank, and that this house meets that, it's 35.7 at its closest on the proposed structure.
Yes.
And I'm not seeing where CONCOM is even an issue over here, though I do see a property on number six. Is that a, is that home next door, very close to the line?
Yes, it is. Yeah, that's, that's a priority, too.
I understood it's not on the law, that's why we here and have.
I understand that.
A board with you.
Just have to understand what we are supposed to go by. Now, if you can get close to that number, I would probably be okay, but right now, you're talking about almost six and a half feet.
Reduction.
Reduction, and that's substantial.
I know, I know it seems like a nitpicky thing, believe me, but it's what our job is here, you know? And, and we don't like to say to you, no, we truly don't, I want to give you, really, but if you've heard other board members say no, they can't be persuaded.
Lastly.
I'm going to go with them.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
In this case, I try to resolve what potentially could work on this case, and how to I combine it all like a piece of puzzle with septic system and the house, and save some, and have some space for my family, like, and go again from, to the conservation historical health of words to accept.
I understand what you're saying, but I have to go by what's in our bylaw.
Can we talk about this proximity, look at the neighbor? The neighbor can.
Well, they're too close, what can I say, preexisting nonconforming.
The house was built in 1950-something, yeah.
So we can look at the age of the house? That house was just renovated, I don't know if it was enlarged, but it was renovated.
It looks like it's a newer house, yeah.
It looks, it's same more than.
It was rebuilt, I think, yeah.
It's more than 2,000 square feet.
I can't go by what somebody else did, I have to go by your lot, that's really what I have to do. So I, giving you what I can.
Yeah, so it's not going to pass tonight if we bring a motion that's going to be denied, and then you're not going to be able to come back in with a like petition, you know, that's downside of that. If you want to avail yourself of your continuing rights before this board, and it's going to take some legwork, because you're likely to have to go back before CONCOM, too.
We already have to, we know that. There's a letter in the file saying that we have to revisit, and we have to revisit, Board of Health? No, we don't. We may have to, because we're moving the house.
This is very reminiscent of my desire to put a third stall in my garage, and I can't do it, because it's too close to my neighbor. I'd love to do it, but I can't, they wouldn't even complain, I can't, he wouldn't let me.
And if there's other things going on that we should be aware of, like other conservation approvals that are still in limbo here, we should have copies of that.
We'll do a little investigation, what would win the day, gentlemen? What do you think would win the day? I know you mentioned it, Mr. Propri, but.
As I said, getting as close as possible to the old setback on that side is what I'm concerned about. So I would just recommend you get as close as possible.
Yeah, if you shrink the house, the footprint of the house, or you move it to the right, it's your decision on how you do it.
Maybe maintain your 20-foot setback on that side, but at least use another three or four feet to push it, push it that way.
I understood you correctly, I need to push the house on the right side around six feet, 6.1?
Somewhere, somewhere around 6.1 to 6.5, yeah.
Push it on the front, because also I could go under the line.
No, you can push it, you're still within the 35 feet, in fact, it's further to the right. 35 feet extends to the right.
It bellies down there, though, I think it would touch eventually.
Touches that, touches where the house sticks out.
If I will touch it, and I need to push it like to the road, I still could.
Six inches or something?
To the front.
I don't know if you're going to have room to push it to the front, you've already, I don't know how you're fitting it in to begin with, with the septic there.
Septic's approved, we lost our engineer at the wrong time, sorry.
I can't, I can't solve it for you, all I can tell you is what, you know.
We appreciate all your feedback, so at least we answered a lot of the questions we have.
Yes, you did.
We have one question, I guess, we have one elephant in the room, right? Is that right?
Other than that, I thought, like I said, I thought it was a nice house.
I love the house.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not an issue of the house or the designer, it's just, you can't put a, a, a school bus into a mini-car parking spot. How is that for, for a description of what you can't do? So this is a very large home, at 2,600 square feet, it's a large home for the lot, okay? It's not necessarily a big home, but it's a large home for this lot. And so either you shrink it, or you move it over. I don't think you're going to shrink this house by six feet, you're going to lose a lot of floor space. You might be able to move it over, DM, close to six feet, and then we're, we're going to say, "Congratulations."
Is there a compromise here where we got sixteen point seven? We do have a problem with this septic system, and I know that's not on the table, but we do. And is there a compromise of halfway? Six point seven is the difference between, no, not even six, we have six point two feet difference from what we have proposed to what you see, and if we moved it three feet, and make the attempt to go along with this, what, how do you feel about that? I mean, just trying to get feedback.
I could be comfortable with it.
If everybody else would be comfortable, I would be, but I'd like to see it within a foot, but, you know, whatever.
Yeah, I think it's a really good faith offer, and it's just the problem is, we can't approve it tonight.
I know, I know that.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you what else we can approve, is any petition that has a lingering CONCOM decision out there.
Just to try to understand your feeling, because we could push it to three feet on the right side, and we will come again after one or one and a half months, I don't want to take your time, and I don't want to waste my time and come one time again.
We want you to be able to build your home in the warm weather, so that's a plus. You might have a builder that's dying and itching to have it go forward, but tonight, you have two choices, and let's move them on, because these gentlemen and I would like to go home and eat dinner.
One more point to address, your last question about conservation, conservation was, I discussed with conservation, changes in this area, and they said they would affect small changes, which this would be, by administrative review. So, it's really you first.
Go to a hearing.
No, no, no hearing, already they said small changes would be approved by administrative review.
This isn't a small change, is it?
No, three feet.
You're already waiting for another hearing, right?
What's that?
Didn't you say you're already waiting for another hearing?
No, no, we're done with conservation. So, what they do is they take what we gave them, they say, "What are you doing for a change?" And we say, "We're moving the whole house, you're changing the shape?" "No, we're changing, you're just changing where you're moving it?" They're going to approve it with, and she told us that, with administrative review, not at home.
Well, that's great if that happens, honestly.
You just bring that forward.
But we have to see you first, that's the point, we don't, we don't see conservation first, we have to see you first.
Okay, then, we have nothing in front of us that we could vote on.
No, right, so, we asked for a continuance.
Yes.
Yeah, but wait a minute, now, you have justified in asking, "What's it going to take, Alfie?" So, you know, if you guys, what did you say, six feet you thought you could accomplish?
No, we said, "Take what we have, six point two feet, split it, and go three feet to the right," that's what I threw out, and we're making a good faith effort.
Yeah, I think if you move it as far as you can to the east, because you might want to maintain that other set, sideline setback, for what it's supposed to be, which is twenty feet, especially with that house being so close on that side.
Hate to see that now create a new one.
Don't create, don't create one on the other side.
Yeah, that's right, so...
Like I said earlier, sometimes people just can't build what they want to build.
So, I know, so...
So, I already spent two years to have approval.
I understand your frustration, but, you know, it's a frustration, then again, it's self-imposed.
You'll build a little cottage, you'd have no trouble.
Okay. So, our next meeting will be a shorter meeting, I hope, correct? I think, yeah.
Okay, let's guarantee that they're going to be first in line, okay? So, they don't have to spend as much time with us as we made them spend tonight. Look, guys, I got to go home and eat dinner, what's your request here?
We do the continuance, can we get a date?
Continuance, yeah.
He's asking for continuance.
We will be ready soon.
We have him sign an extension agreement?
Sure.
And we'll, we'd be looking for something that shows us that you've considered the nonconformity, and done the best you can to reduce the nonconformity you're now showing. So, if you got to sign the extension agreement, when do, when can we get them back in?
June eighth is the next one.
June eighth, you do the work by June eighth?
Well, we will be done with work next week.
Well, we don't have a meeting next week.
Yeah, but, so...
You see, we only meet twice a month.
No, I don't have a penny.
We have other things on our agenda, how bad is our next meeting?
Couple more things.
Couple more?
Oh, yeah, just the meeting minutes.
No, 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 next meeting, how many things do we have on?
What do you mean, next meeting?
How many items?
First Tuesday in April.
Right here in the day.
First Tuesday in April, well, we're going to try to do five a night now, to kind of do a little catch-up here.
I may have to be virtual, by the way.
Well, we definitely don't want to reconstitute the board, is everybody going to be here on whatever night we choose?
On June eighth?
I'll be here whenever you want me, so, either by being here or Zoom, one or the other. Thank you, sir. Yeah, yeah, I get it up here, thank you. But we, I'm just going to be writing in the date, okay? And we're going to try and get you in as quick as possible, okay? So, is there any way we can get him in sooner than June eighth?
I will do my best.
All right, well, we got to have a date certain tonight, unfortunately, so, are they contro...
Say June eighth, and if we're able to move them up in the line, we will.
Yeah, but you can't do that without, it affects your advertising, right?
Advertised, right.
You know, you got to re-advertise it, then, and he's got to pay for re-advertising it, you know? So, I want to give him a date certain. Is, are the five, are the four things that are on the agenda now, are they heavy lifting, or are they simple?
Well, we can change the ad again, I suppose, the third time. Well, when would you be ready?
We'll be ready in a week, yeah.
You can get new plans, you can get new plans by next week.
April what?
April thirteenth.
There you go.
April thirteenth.
Look at how we bend over backwards for you, sir.
Oh, man, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
April thirteenth. I'm writing that on this form you've signed, sir, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, thank you both.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
We'll see you then.
Yeah, see you.
Is that voted?
Oh, yeah. It's getting late, and I'm getting punchy, okay? I've been at it since eight, so forgive me. Anybody prepared to make a motion?
So moved for the continuance.
A second, please? All right, we'll do it by role, by voice vote, please.